Good evening, everyone. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. Today is Tuesday, September 20th, 2022, and this is the Lewisville City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann, and I'll ask our city clerk if we could please have a roll call.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahy? Councilmember Lay? Councilmember Most?
And she is here, virtually. I see her.
Councilmember Most, if you could turn on your video?
Sorry, I'm here. Just having some technical problems.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. If you'll please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The agenda is approved. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda. So if you have a comment for a topic that we're not going to discuss tonight, or a topic that only appears on our consent agenda, please raise your hand and let us know what you'd like to tell us. I saw some hands in the queue before we even started, so I just want to make sure if your hand is up online that it's for a topic that we do not have on our agenda, or that only appears on our consent agenda. I'll start with the sign-up cards I have, so folks have a second online to straighten that out, and then we'll get to the online ones, too. So first, we have Josh Olson. And all night, the rules will go, if you have a topic, just let us know your name and what town you live in, and then you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us. Just one second, Josh. Sorry, we'll get the microphone turned on for you. Sorry.
Testing.
Perfect.
Hello, City Council. Thanks for taking the time. My name is Josh, and I'm here to talk about road safety and hopefully bring your attention to some areas that can be improved upon. Last year, 672 people died in traffic crashes in Colorado, and this number is only expected to rise as more and more people move into the state. Major contributing factors to these deaths are driver impairment, non-usage of seatbelts, hazardous road conditions, low visibility, and driver unawareness of hazardous conditions. With fall and winter fast approaching, it is never too early to begin to prepare for the most hazardous driving season. First, to address problems related to driver impairment or error, Lewisville can set up more electronic signs on heavily trafficked streets that include warnings such as click it or ticket, hazardous conditions slow down to X speed, heightened police patrols, DUI enforcement in effect, et cetera. Additionally, the city can install weather-related variable speed limit signs that lower speed limits when conditions are hazardous, and install more radar speed signs that notify drivers when they are going too fast. The city can also add more red light cameras at major intersections and warnings. These cameras are present to deter reckless and risky driving. To address the hazardous road conditions themselves, there are several more actions the city can take. With fall approaching and trees rapidly losing their leaves, city gutters are at a heightened risk of being clogged, which can create significant flooding on roads. This flooding, especially when combined with less daylight hours during the winter months, creates a greater chance of cars hydroplaning and crashing into others. Additionally, potholes and other poor road conditions can cause water and ice to accumulate, creating further danger of cars hydroplaning and losing their grip. By ensuring gutters stay unclogged and there are no areas in the road where water can accumulate, the city can better protect its drivers and pedestrians. In addition to ensuring water can't accumulate, the city can also place more reflectors on the roads to clearly mark lanes, and reflective directional signs to indicate which way the roads are turning. Oftentimes, it's hard to see these reflection reflectors when drivers need them the most. By implementing these changes, the city can better protect its drivers and pedestrians during all seasons of the year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have... Tanya, I believe you wanted to speak on public comments on items not on the agenda. If that's incorrect, I'll just move on. Thank you. Tanya Swamuru.
Hi. Thank you, Council. I'm Tanya Swamuru, 944 Larksboro Lane. I just want to say, we're looking down at the one-year mark for the Marshall Fire, and I want to thank you for putting use tax on the agenda today and discussing that. But there's other business that we would like to see discussed before we hit the one-year mark. For example, the community would still like to discuss evacuations, fuels mitigation, water tap fees. Aggress across Davidson Mesa, there's a group of homeowners in Spanish Hills who are trying to make contact with the right people in Lewisville to discuss this and can't seem to. And we'd also like some recommendations for how to ember-proof our homes moving forward. And I'm hoping Council will take up some of this agenda before the one-year mark. Some of these things, it seems extremely late to be discussing them, even at nine months. People will be moving back into their homes soon. Some people. We would very... Especially pressing is to discuss evacuations and fuels mitigation. It really isn't enough that people behind the scenes are discussing this and that the public is not part of it. I know that there's a lot of things Council would like to get passed. For example, you're working on affordable housing. Great vision. Passing 2021 code for commercial businesses. But that is not critical, time-critical like this is, because we want to know when we move back to our houses, and it's a windy, dry night, and we're up at night, you know, thinking, are we safe? Are we safe? I want to have a list of things I know that are different this time, why I can put my children to bed and feel safe. And I feel like nine months after the disaster is long enough to wait to start that conversation. So please, let's start that conversation. Prioritize it ahead of other business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Andrew Hu.
Hi, all. I'm Andrew Hu, and today I want to discuss the need for brighter streetlights at high-traffic times and in high-traffic areas to promote human safety in the city. So as previously mentioned, I just feel like it's an issue because of general human physical safety. And so far, I know that the city of Lewisville has made environmental strides with respect to streetlights in the city, and they have participated... The city has participated in a five-year phased project with Excel Energy to convert 1,100 decorative streetlights to dark sky compliant LED fixtures across the community. And I think this is extremely important and will greatly benefit the city. And I also think it's great that the program took into consideration feedback from the community with previous streetlight conversion. And this resulted in altering the color, temperature, and brightness of the lights. And by 2025, I think that all of Lewisville's remaining streetlights will be dark sky compliant and energy efficient. And while this is a great thing and it helps protect our environment and our habitat, there still needs to be more done to promote physical human safety, and I think that we can do this in a way that remains compliant with the pressing environmental issues. So I think that there needs to be an increase in, you know, the brightness or an increase in streetlights, especially in high-traffic areas, to protect our lives. So while an increase in streetlights will have a greater impact on the environment, I also think that they should only be used during limited times and during high-traffic times, because this way, we can still keep in mind the environmental issues and keep, like, humans safe and pedestrians safe. So for example, when it starts getting dark earlier, which is right around the corner, the streetlights, I think, should go on for a couple of hours mainly during high-traffic times and should turn off once significant traffic dies down. And in addition to this, maybe we can change some of the lights to have sensors to increase brightness when people are nearby. So while protecting the environment, wildlife, and humans from the harming effects of light pollution are important, I still believe that physical safety needs to be taken into consideration, especially given the fact that Colorado has so many bikers, hikers, walkers, and people with pets. And sometimes at night, it can be tough to see them. So an increase in brightness only during select times and in select high pedestrian and high vehicle areas can have an overall positive effect on keeping humans safe physically while still mitigating negative effects from the environment. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, we have Joshua Cooperman.
Hello. This is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. I must respectfully... Respectful... Sorry. I must respectfully disagree with the previous speaker. I understand his point of view, but simply making lights brighter is not the solution. There are plenty of studies which show that when you make lights too bright, it actually makes the situation worse, because there's too much light on the road, and people can't see anything except the light, and then they can't see other cars and other walkers and other vehicles like bicycles. In fact, I would say that the recently installed streetlights along major corridors are not sufficiently dark sky compliant. They are too hot. They're basically white, and they should be much cooler in temperature. I would even say that they're too bright. I don't drive at night that often, but when I do and I go under those, it is almost painful to drive through them. So again, I would say, the issue is not brightness. It is well-designed lights, and that is what we need. And when the lights are well-designed, you can see well, and you don't make more sky glow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And seeing no other comments, that takes us to our consent agenda. Could I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Any council comments this evening? Seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report.
Thanks, Mayor. I have nothing for tonight.
Great. Thank you. That takes us to our regular business. Our first item of regular business is Resolution Number 37, Series 2022, a resolution denying approval of an amendment to the Dila Lofts, Dila West, planned unit development to allow construction of 233-unit multifamily structures and a 1,575-square-foot commercial structure. A special review used to allow for residential units on the ground floor and a plat for the property located on the southeast corner of Griffith Street and Cannon Street. The public hearing was closed at the last meeting on this, so we'll just have a staff presentation and then council action.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I don't have a presentation for you tonight, but I am happy to answer any questions that you may have with respect to the resolution before you.
Thank you. Any council questions and comments? Seeing none, are there any motions? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move Resolution 37, Series 2020.
Is Resolution 37, Series 2022, is that what you said?
Excuse me, 2022, yes. Resolution... Let me just start over again. I'll move Resolution Number 37, Series 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And just turn it over to Planner Ritchie to just make sure everybody's clear what we're voting on. So a yes vote signifies...
A yes vote on the resolution would signify denial of the application.
All right. So is everyone clear what we're voting on? Councilmember Most, I didn't see any kind of nod or... Excellent, thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, City Clerk Meath, could we please have a roll call vote on the motion?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Portem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Most?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
No.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. And that takes us to our next order of business this evening, which is discussion direction of the Use Tax Credit Program. We'll have staff presentation from our principal planner, Lisa Ritchie.
Mayor?
And we'll have any disclosures from council members?
I would like to recuse myself, and so I will be leaving the room until this item is over.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Just in our recusal policy, the recusal policy requires the member to state the reason for the recusal in the previous meetings. Councilman Fahy has let us know that since she owns property in the area, she feels like there might be a perception of... A perception of inappropriate behavior. So she's recusing herself. But we've talked also previously that since there are so many people similarly situated, that it is a judgment call. Planner Ritchie?
Sure. Thank you, City Council. So this is the third time that we've been bringing this back for you to kind of further refine the concept of the Use Tax Credit Program. So again, what is use tax? Use tax is collected by the city at the time of building permit for construction materials, replaces collection of sales tax at time of sale. This process allows the city to keep the tax rather than the jurisdiction where the purchase occurs. I do have more of the background slides that I've saved from previous presentations at the back, but I'm not going to go over those tonight. So where are we tonight, based on your direction? We are now calling this a Use Tax Credit Proposal. It would be available to property owners that owned property at the time of Marshall Fire. We have asked for a couple clarifications that came up during public comment last time. The first is, the city council interested in allowing property owners who owned a different property that lost a home in Marshall Fire to kind of be able to participate in this program? We could draft the ordinance as such. And if we're asking this question, we felt it reasonable to ask if you also want to allow them for the energy code. So and then clarifying one step further, if it needs to be property within Lewisville to Lewisville, or if it's really any fire property. So this is not changed. This would be available till December 31st, 2024. The credit amount would be proportional to the previous home. So staff has evaluated the first 54 building permits that have come in just to kind of understand the trends that we're seeing so far. On average, we'll see an 80% credit. So the homes are, you know, the difference is 80%. But the range of credit will be between 48 and 100%. So the range is quite wide, average of 80. This will require that the applicant verify insurance proceeds are not covering use tax. For now, we believe, as Boulder County is still working through their use tax rebate, we believe that we will still collect the Boulder County use tax, and then they would rebate it directly to the homeowner later. So again, the process now looks a little different. We did receive guidance from the city's bond council that we can do this at the time of permit in form of a credit on the invoice. So the homeowner or builder would apply for a permit to reconstruct the home. Property owner at that time should attest they are requesting the use tax credit due to underinsurance. The full evaluation of the project is provided on the permit application. Staff would verify the ownership, as well as the previous first proposed home size. We would calculate the use tax credit as a line item on their invoice. So the invoice would then reflect the use tax paid in full. One other item that came up last time, so if the builder pays for the permit, staff would require that the homeowner submit a letter authorizing the builder to receive the use tax credit on their behalf. And obviously, as we've discussed before, that those that have already paid in full would be eligible to receive a rebate or a refund for the use tax credit already paid. Little bit of cost assumptions. So we are assuming that the total credits would amount to 75% of the collected use tax. Again, right now, we're trending at 80, but we do think that there will be a number of homes over the next couple of years that get bought by other lots. We're going to keep 100% of that use tax. And we also think this range might vary a little bit. So for now, we're assuming 75% for a total of approximately $4.3 million. The distribution of the credits can come out of the associated funds. They do not require, unless you direct us to, it's not required that we do fund transfers. So our city's bond council is on the meeting, and will answer any questions related to the legality of those types of actions within the city budget. That is all I have for you tonight as far as an update. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much. And we'll take public comment on this topic now. This is the third time we've heard this topic, so I'd encourage people to make new comments or comment on the proposal that's before us. We've tried really hard to incorporate a lot of the comments that we've heard already, and we got all your letters, too. So if you wonder if we read your email, I at least can speak for myself that I did, and I'm pretty confident my colleagues did as well. So we have a number of people signed up. And again, you can tell us anything you'd like to, but I would encourage new comments. First, we have Judy Kern.
Hi. Good evening. Judy Kern, 955 El Dorado in Lewisville. Been here 25 years, so I think I've only been to two city council meetings in 25 years that I felt it was necessary. My comments are substantially new for me. Right after the fire, when we were all at the Disaster Relief Center, we were encouraged to take the help, and we were encouraged to ask for help. Not an easy thing to do for most of us, I think. Especially, my husband and I had a very hard time realizing that we were in a position where we needed that. Unfortunately, tonight, I'm in an even more awkward position. I'm asking my city, that I never thought I would stand in front of, for help. It never occurred to me that you wouldn't just, as my neighbors, automatically, after 25 years of being here, automatically choose to do the right thing and help each and every one of us with 100% of a use tax relief. I can speak for everybody who's under... Well, I assure you, I can speak for myself and my husband, who are severely underinsured. Even though we're only talking $15,000 to $20,000 or so in taxes, that pays for all the appliances in my kitchen, non-biking, just regular appliances, to go into a regular kitchen. That's how much that matters to people like me. And any one of you is fortunate enough not to be here. Deb decided to not sit here, but you could be standing here with me, and I think you would feel just as uncomfortable as I do saying, can you help me with something as little as a few, like, 10, 20 grand? It seems like nothing. I can't even buy a car for that. But right now, I can't build my house, my home, in Lewisville. And this is one of the ways that you can help me to redo that, to come back, to spend my money here, keep going to Bao, and, you know, go to Union Jack Liquor. And I don't know what else to do to come home, other than to have you help me to do that. And I hope that none of you ever, for your time living here, ever know what we've known, because this has been a literal nightmare. As we were saying, it's almost a year. I have no idea whether I'll be able to put my house back or not. I don't. It's a 30-year-old home. I don't need a $1.1 million house. I just need a house to live in, and I'll have that. So if you could help us, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Barrett.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is John Barrett. I'm here with my wife, Carol. I've spoken before about this issue at a prior meeting. We have lived in Lewisville for 40 years. We raised our children here, Lisa and Kevin, went to Fireside Elementary and Lewisville Middle School. I served as the Associate Judge of the Municipal Court for 10 years. We purchased our home new in 1993, and I do appreciate the proposal that's before you. I would just like to address the issue of those of us that have... Are going to be building a larger home. For us, it's not necessarily that we want a larger home. It's just, my wife and I, we don't need a larger home. We could use a smaller home. We picked Boulder Creek as our builder, because they're more affordable than a pure custom build, but they have a limited number of plans. And we're trying to pick a plan that fits within our insurance coverage. We picked a model that has a main floor prime suite. Hopefully, that will enable us to age in place, which we would like to do. I think there are many people that, for whatever reason, are building larger homes. And so I would ask that you consider not prorating the rebate based on the square footage of the homes, because not all of us are necessarily choosing a larger home because we want a larger home. We're choosing a larger home because of other circumstances, and that's what's offered by the builder, and that's what's going to fit on your lot. So that would be my point to make tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Charlotte Buck.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'm Charlotte Buck from 947 Larksboro Lane. I am scrounging for every nickel available to me to rebuild a better forever home than the one that burned. I would like to build one that will be very cost-effective to own and live in, and I am trying to include as many energy efficiencies as I can afford. I have a wish list, but I don't have enough funds for most of them. Excel has many rebates I would like to tap into, but it takes money to get to the best efficiency levels and rebates. I know your vision for new homes in Lewisville was to make our town a leader in promoting high-performing residential homes. I want to be able to build one of those, now that I have an opportunity. Now is the time for Marshall Fire folks like me to make the initial investment in the quality of our homes. With materials at an all-time high, crediting back the use tax for those of us who qualify will help me and others to build our clean energy homes, and in the process, we will be helping Lewisville address the climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Genevieve.
Hi. My name is Genevieve Sperania. I was at 457 Mirrorfield Circle. We lost our house in Coal Creek Ranch. We've lived in Lewisville for 20 years, and I wanted to make an argument against prorating for square footage. First of all, square footage is a little bit artificial. It's a way to measure, but it's a little bit of artificial way to measure. For instance, we are using almost exactly the same footprint, but because climate change was responsible for why our house is burning down, we have decided to do passive. And in order to do passive, you really don't want vaulted ceilings. And so when we get rid of those, you end up increasing the square footage. Obviously, you have a second floor that is above that, where that vaulting was in the first place. And so I would just implore you to not prorate this credit. And please make it as large as possible. I was going to say, it's not going to, like, gold-plated toilets in our bathrooms or anything. It is going toward paying down the eventual... Really, paying down the eventual cost of the mortgage, which God knows how much it's going to be by the time we have to roll it over into a mortgage. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Russ Moore.
Hi, I'm Russ Moore. I lost a house at 1013 Rappahoe Circle. First of all, I'd like to thank council and staff for all your work on this and providing some use fee relief. I would echo my neighbors in terms of providing us as much relief as possible. We're all struggling to rebuild. And if you can do... I would support the proposal as currently proposed, although if you had it in your wherewithal, I would certainly ask that you loosen up a little bit on the proration. For some of the same reasons that Genevieve just talked about, our footprint's likely to be a bit bigger. We're trying to get rid of vaulting and being energy efficient, and we're trying to build a house to age in place. But again, thank you for your efforts here. Any use fee relief would be welcome, and I'd urge you to give us as much as you could so that we can actually come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tanya Swamuru.
Hello again. I want to thank you for bringing this back to council and moving use tax proposal along. For the most part, I agree with the proposal. I would like to mirror everyone else's who's expressed their concern that possibility of removing the prorating. My neighborhood cornerstone had very small, pretty reasonable-sized houses, and the semi-custom builders that are there, very few of them are offering 17 or 2,000-square-foot homes. You know, a lot of people have... If you're going semi-custom, you are ending up with a bigger house, whether you like it or not. And I'd also like to point out that some jurisdictions in California that have done similar things, like waived permitting or use taxes, have given a little bit of a buffer, recognizing that. Like, one jurisdiction gave 20% buffer, and then had allowed people to get a rebate up to, you know, 120% of their original square footage. Maybe that's one thing you could do is increase it. Maybe that's one thing you could do is increase it or just provide the full use tax rebate, which would be great. I also want to point out that, under the current proposal, it looks like the city gets to keep 60% of the use taxes that will be generated from the rebuild of the 550 homes. If 50% of us rebuild, and at the moment, you're seeing 20%, houses in general are 20% bigger, then you're going to be keeping 60% of the fees. So I just want to point out that, under the current proposal, the city is going to, if the use taxes that are generated from the fire are going to be 8 to 12 million, you're going to be keeping 60% of that, or maybe 50% if you are more generous with the square footage. But this doesn't cost the city. It's only a budget exercise to pass it. There's some shenanigans with the general fund, but you can do it. You can approve this, and it's the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Next, we have Larry Donner.
Yes, I'm just calling in to say, I appreciate, oh, my name's Larry Donner. I lost my home at 1020 Willow Place. I'm calling in to thank you and say I support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Yasmin Ramen.
Here than the parent-teacher meetings I had to leave. Yasmin Ramen, 462 Mirrorfield Circle, lost my home. Really glad to see so many neighbors here. I have a combination of a bunch of those comments all put together, which you don't realize until you start planning the house. I also wanted to be more energy efficient and get rid of the lofted ceilings that took up the heat and took up the cold and made our energy costs rise. And realized, after we got rid of the lofted ceilings, all of a sudden, we're going to bump up against, you know, any rules that penalize us for increasing the square footage. And we also realized that, since we had to keep costs down, we wanted to square the house as much as possible. Fewer fancy, you know, more energy efficient, and also lower cost to build. So that means you cut out all of the things that cut the square footage, but keep the building costs a little bit lower in a sort of weird, twisted way. So all of those things make it look like we're trying to expand the size of the house when we're trying to think about efficiency and cost. And, you know, energy efficiency and cost. And also, now that we're going to have to sink so much into the house, not going to be able to afford to move. So we also plan to make it the forever house, so the ground floor has to be better suited in case of the lack of mobility as we age. So I'm asking, if possible, as much of the resources go back to the homeowners, so we can afford to stay in place. Thank you. And who knows, the kids are likely to come back with this economy.
Thank you. Next, we have Janine and Paul.
Hello. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Janine Fugere. I'm speaking behalf of my husband Paul and myself. And we lost our home at Wildflower Condominium Association, 430 Owl Drive. Sorry, I just got a big lump in my throat. We've lived there for a long time. I've been there for 21 years. And the biggest reason that I moved to Lewisville was because it had been raided again and again and again. It's one of the number-one towns in the United States to move to. And I always knew that that was the case. The unthinkable happened to us when the home burned down. And the reality is, never, ever, ever, ever dawned on me that there would be anything that would come up that would make it not possible that we would keep that home. Paul and I were blessed that we were out of the country at the time that it happened. But because of the expenses and everything that we've lost in terms of underinsurance, we're not even in a position to come back right now. So we're trying to navigate all of this via long distance. And we got hit with a really, really bad blow this week, which is, we learned that in Wildflower Condominium Association, what we believed was true, wasn't true, which was that our own personal insurance was even more inadequate than we thought, because the HOA's insurance is more inadequate than they thought. And as such, instead of covering our betterments, which we've been told for countless years that they would be covered, we are only going to be rebuilt to the original floor plan of the house. My original floor plan of the house didn't even have a basement in it. Yet, I bought the house with a finished basement. So just right there, we're going to be taking a huge loss. And I just want to address, I am so grateful. I've been on, I've spoken before, I've written letters. And I'm grateful for the committee and the staff members who've come up with a really good proposal. You've heard us, you've listened, that many of us cannot possibly rebuild and cannot remain in Lewisville if we don't get a substantial rebate tax. But the concern to me is, some of the things that have been presented, while they're really, really admirable, they're not going to be enough because of how much underinsurance there was, both for us and how much underinsurance for some of the homeowners' associations, that it's a double whammy for some of us. And I don't know anybody who was insured properly, and you can easily say, "Gosh, shame on you." But there is no way to adequately know what's going to happen unless you go through this. And I'm literally saying, I think Lewisville's going to become a far less diverse community than it was designed to be, which was one of the reasons I moved there in the first place. If city council doesn't find a way to give 100% rebates of this use tax, I've seen the city budget. You have money elsewhere for the admirable things on the agenda. And I'm asking you to make the right choice, so that we can come home. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Suzanne McKee.
Hi there. Suzanne McKee, 455 Mirrorfield, also lost our home. First, I'd like to thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk with you and to think these things through. What I want to say is pretty short. Just, from the moment of the fire, we've been living in uncertainty. How much is this going to cost? How long is this going to take? Are we doing the right thing? Should we really rebuild? Is this right for our kids? Is this right for us long-term? So it's constant uncertainty in everything that we do and every way that we turn. Today, we had some happiness, you know? We got our building permit approved. After eight weeks of review, very stressful, a lot of uncertainty, we had about five minutes of celebration, and then we were handed a gigantic invoice. And the majority of that is use tax, thousands and thousands of dollars in use tax. And it was like a gut punch. And we just said, "Ah." And then the uncertainty is back. Can we do this? Should we be doing this? What are we doing? How are we going to afford this? So I come here with a simple ask, to just step back and think of everything that the community has been through and do what's right. Do the absolute most that you can do. Give us back the absolute most that you can, so that we can move forward, so that not only financially, you're giving us that help, but you're also giving us that certainty that our city really does want to do everything possible, so that we can come home. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brandon Garcia.
Yes, hello. Brandon Garcia here, from 965 Eldorado Lane. And, you know, first of all, I want to thank the city council for their revisions and their attention to this issue. And we know that you know this is important, and you're doing all the right things and hearing the feedback. And I also want to just commend all the folks here that have spoken today. It's not easy. This is not an easy life that we are living. It has its ups and downs, and I can hear everyone's passion and just honesty and vulnerability here on the calls today. So I just commend everyone who's speaking up there and hearing your voices, having your voices heard. I'd like to, you know, just have the council reconsider the proration of the use tax. By definition, you know, we all have to attest that we are underinsured to even, you know, apply for this credit. So that is just a fact that we all agree on, is that, you know, the folks that are using this are underinsured. And, you know, the deafness of underinsurance is that we're all going to go into more debt. We all need money where we can find it. It's, you know, it feels very much like a top of a roller coaster, and we're all about to go down this track, and we're not sure exactly what this ride's going to look like. But we need some help. We need, you know, additional dollars. And the fact that we all are underinsured means that we need, you know, the full use tax sent back to us. You know, where is that money going? You know, if it is collected by the city, I'm sure there are very wise choices to be made to use those funds. But giving the extra thousands of dollars back beyond proration are going to go towards, as everyone stayed, energy-efficient homes, responsible choices. These are not going to luxury items. These are not going to things where, you know, we are getting unfair benefits. We are going to be doing, and I think this comes to an element of trust from you all, that, you know, you're trusting us to use these dollars wisely, to invest it into our homes, to invest it into fire mitigation, so that, you know, if this, God forbid, ever happens again, you know, we are in a stronger place where it's not going to spread the same way. And that's the reality, that we are all choosing to have the courage to rebuild it, you know? Lots of our friends we have seen have chose not to rebuild, and we understand it. It's hard. It's not easy to do this. We're doing this. It's uncertain. It's, you know, we need some assurance that we can put our best effort forward for not just our personal homes and our personal comfort, but our, you know, our community's safety. And that's where these dollars are going, you know? And I just want the city council to consider that in their repeal of the proration. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have former council member Yarnell.
I'm Frost Yarnell, 1109 Hillside Lane. And first, I want to say thank you. Thank you for listening to us. This has been a gut-wrenching experience to come and talk about this repeatedly. And you guys really did listen and listened to, you know, can we do a credit instead of a rebate? And all of that. And I really, really appreciate that. And I want to thank everyone that came and spoke tonight, because I hadn't even thought of asking to reconsider the prorating. I think I've been getting used to just being so grateful for anything that I get, that I don't really think about what more there might be. And the reality is, is we're also probably going to have to build a little bit more square footage because of the limited number of choices that we have with, again, with the ground floor, main bedroom. And that's a crucial piece for us. There had been some thought that we may have to leave Lewisville because our home didn't have a ground floor bedroom. And we were getting to the point where that was, you know, maybe going to be necessary. And this, although I would never, ever wish this on anyone, we do now have a chance to do that ground floor bedroom, but it adds square footage from what we had. And we have been trying to figure out how we're going to afford to do that. The other thing that another member of the audience reminded me is that, with the additional square footage, the city will get incrementally more in property taxes over the next, you know, 100 years, hopefully, that these homes will stand. And my other thought was, it could make it a little easier for staff, that if it's just going to be 100% across the board, they don't have to go back and look at the old square footage and calculate it and do all that kind of stuff. So there might be a little bit of cost-saving there. So I hope that, for all the reasons that you've heard tonight, you can reconsider the prorating. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And next, we have Dan and Erica.
Hi, this is Erica. And can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name's Erica Bramledge of 966 Arapahoe Circle. We lost our home. Family of four had lived there for 11 years. My boys grew up there. We're displaced right now in Superior. And wanted to share just a couple of quick numbers with you and a new point about the SBA loan process, which I'm sorry if that creates tremors in the room. We've all been through a lot of hours and hours of our time working on getting approval for the SBA loan process. We were insured at $354,000 for our home, $180,000 for our personal property. Even if we put every penny of our personal property into building a home, it doesn't cover it. We were hoping for a loan from the SBA process. We were approved. They, the numbers are very, also low in terms of what they think that we should be able to rebuild our home for. And I just wanted to make mention of the SBA process. The reason why it was so stressful is, they called us all the time to tell us bad news. They called us in the evening, Friday evening, Saturday morning at 7:00 a.m. We never had any respite from this process. We have not been approved, and we will not get any support for a low-interest rate loan. Interest rates are going up. You may have gone to the grocery store and seen your favorite products going up in prices. This is not going to get any easier, as the people have talked about with the uncertainty. It's getting harder and harder every minute. And this is just the worst time to buy anything, and we have to rebuy everything. And we are devastatingly underinsured. So as you look and vote tonight, please, if you can give us any assistance that you can, it means a lot to us. Every dollar, every penny means a lot to us. It's like somebody just took $500,000 out of my 401K. I am a college graduate. My husband is not. But we made all the right choices to do what we could throughout our lives. And, I mean, to take $500,000 out of my retirement and out of my school's, my kid's college funds is a tremendous detriment. Every dollar counts, because you're also paying 6% to 7% interest rate on that. We are already locked in for a home, a new mortgage for construction, and we are paying triple the interest rate that what we had on our mortgage. And so those are some of the factors that I just wanted to share with you. And I echo the feeling of uncertainty. I may be building a home that I cannot afford to live in, and then I have to sell it. I would love to stay in my home in Lewisville. I have no desire to leave. And I'm asking for your help tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Just waiting for the list to come back. All right. Thank you all for your comments very much. I'll take it over to council discussion on the topic. Council member Lee.
Yeah, I have, I guess, some comments I want to make to the survivors, particularly the ones that are here tonight and the ones who are on Zoom and on the feed. And then I've got a technical question and a comment about the prorating piece. I really heard the comment, and I think all of us did, around wanting help and how that isn't a position that most people find themselves in. And I think we probably sometimes underappreciate that. I know I do, anyway. I don't speak for everybody else. But, and we appreciate that you feel that way. We also know that this is, through no fault of anybody's, that we're in this position, and we're in a position on council to be able to do something. And I know that that's something we have heard from people in the community, not just survivors, but other people in the community who've clamored for help for you. So I hope you'll remember that, too, as you're kind of working through it. I, the comment was made that, gee, it doesn't seem like much, $10,000 here or there. Trust me, that's a lot of money by anybody's measure. And so we appreciate the need to try to, you know, find pennies where you possibly can to try to get yourselves back in shape. I was a little heartbroken to hear the comment, which was sort of off the cuff about, gee, sort of shame on us for not getting better insurance or whatever. Absolutely not. And I know there's one person at our council dais who can probably talk for a significant period, Kyle Brown, because he works in the Division of Insurance, about that is an endemic problem. It is a problem that is going to be, hopefully, remedied for the next group of people. But I absolutely, please, if you find yourself even casually referring to that as something you should be concerned about or ashamed about, just call one of us. We can tell, we can talk you out of it. And probably your fellow, your fellow survivors can, too. We want you back, if you can. As you know, I think we can't I think we can't say that enough on council. We hope you can come back. For those of us who, for those of you who return, we hope you will stay because that's not a foregone conclusion either. I was reminded the other day that a lot of people will be moving back, and they want to see what kind of town we have when they come back. We are very proud of you, and we want to be the kind of community that you're proud of. And I think that's what all of us have been trying to do up here in different ways on this proposal. So I just wanted to say those things because I think there is a, what I have heard time and again is from people in the community who've lost their homes is that, gee, we sometimes feel like council has forgotten us or has gotten over it, gotten to the next step, and we're still on the crucible. We haven't forgotten you. We know you're still on the crucible. We know that that's going to last for a long time, and we're very much focused. And we'll continue to be focused. And thankfully, you're here to remind us to continue to be focused. The second thing I wanted to ask is that there is a part, and I'm going to go directly to the packet. There's a description of how the distribution of the tax credit is to happen. And I'm looking at the first bullet on page 72. It says, "If the homeowner has already received a permit and paid its use tax estimate to the city, it will be able to receive a rebate in the amount eligible through the Use Tax Credit Programs through the Planning and Building Department." My question has to do with the word rebate. I think council has been pretty clear that we don't want to trigger a taxable event for the homeowner under any circumstance. Rebates generally, kind of taxable events to me. I'm not a tax lawyer, but it's different than the tax credit. And I guess I want to confirm, council, perhaps that that is, you know, that we're still in a good place. I understand why it's there. I just don't, I want to make sure we're not making a goof.
So Planner Ritchie, Councilmember Lay is asking if we're going to make the credit, you know, in arrears and then process our refund.
For those that have already paid, that will be the process. We can't, I mean, we can't really, we're still working out the backend details. I don't think we want to actually void the permit so it would come in the form of a refund. But the city's bond council is also on that potentially could...
Yeah. Well, I, yeah, I'd like an answer to the question I asked. I want to make sure that we're not, we're not forcing in some ways a taxable event on the homeowner.
Hi, Kim Crawford with Butler Snow. I am also not a tax attorney. I'm a bond attorney. But I think if you do a rebate or a tax credit, I don't think that there is going to be a taxable event for the homeowner.
Thanks. Then the final comment kind of goes back to this issue of the prorating. And I appreciate the people who've talked about this. What I've heard, you know, there are some people who are building custom homes. There are some people who may be building semi-custom homes. There are a number of people and maybe a majority of people who are building production or homes that are, you know, neither of the other two categories. And I know what we're trying to do by limiting our, you know, the scope of this program. But I guess I certainly, I have two, I guess, thoughts. One is, I certainly don't want to give with one hand and take back, you know, give relief with one hand and take back the sorts of climate change-friendly building practices that are going to be used to build these homes. And that's, so I'm concerned about that. I think that was mentioned in terms of not vaulting the ceilings and things like that. I know that creates more room in the house, more square footage, or can. I don't like the idea of sort of not, I just don't think that people are doing that in order to build larger, larger homes. I could be wrong, but I think in most cases, that's not really what's going on. I am very concerned, though, that there are some of these production homes where people really would like to build smaller, but they just, if they do that, they're going to end up spending more because it's going to turn into a semi-custom home if they do that. And that troubles me, too. I think this is one of those situations where I wonder whether we could come up with some, something in between, sort of giving, not creating any limitation on the program. I don't think that's where we're headed. But giving, putting, building in enough room that what we're really talking about is a material increase that is designed to, you know, use this event to do more than just build back the house that they had. And so I guess I think the language, we can probably come up with language, or council could come up with language that might help this. But I think we're being parsimonious if we're going to not look at that set of issues. And it would be, I think, I think it would be a mistake. And, you know, in the end, this is a really important bit of relief that we're providing, and I think we should, we should not be unnecessarily rigid about what we're doing. Thanks.
Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, colleague, for your comments. But I want to start off by thanking Planner Ritchie, Deputy City Manager Davis, and our city attorney for working on this because I think what you came back with absolutely fit the spirit of what we were asking for and working with bond council and the attorneys. The idea that we could do something that doesn't have the tax implication of a grant program, I think that's the difference between a credit and a rebate, is if it's a grant, then it's a taxable event. But, you know, why would we consider doing this? You know, the number one reason we would consider doing this is it encourages our Louisville neighbors to rebuild. You know, we really want to bring our community back. You know, I spoke with, you know, someone who lost their home in the fire just this afternoon, excitedly looking at their plans for rebuilding their home. You know, for me, that was a really genuine time of connecting with somebody who lost their home and is looking forward, and that's what we want to be doing tonight. So, you know, the first thing I think is important, and thank you for working on this with the concept of a credit, you know, that simplifies it, avoids the tax implications, and it's something that I mentioned last time I thought was very important. And, you know, another reason why we're doing this is to really help people rebuild. And the number one reason is people are underinsured. I think that is an important aspect of this, is for people to do that declaration because I believe most everybody is underinsured in this. I think there is a gap. And, you know, for me, that was an important step. The other thing is it provides some certainty. As we move forward with this, we have, we would have to go through two more steps, a first reading and a second reading, but that would happen in the next several meetings. But it starts providing certainty that you're asking for, and it's something that I think is really important. And that's a direction that I want us to do tonight. And the other thing is that a certainty of a credit at the time of the building permit. So for some of you who have gotten a little bit ahead of the curve of other people, you've paid that, but, you know, this proposal is, is that we would give back a rebate with the, at the same, you know, the same level. The issue was brought up tonight, and I struggle with the word prorating. What we're talking about is giving 100% credit for the size of the home when it was burnt. The question that I have, and it's something I'd like to hear from my colleagues, should we give an allowance based upon that? I think the testimony that I heard tonight was convincing that these houses, if they're going to be energy efficient or meet the needs of 2022 or '23, whenever the house gets built, it may have to have a little bit different form. And we should consider, and I would suggest maybe up to a 10% allowance above and beyond what the house was when it burned on December 30th of 2021. The other thing is, is I, you know, as we were going through this discussion, we talk about city funds. I kind of wish that we had had the budget discussion that the city manager is going to bring to us. I think it's two items from now. And, you know, one of the things that's in that is we're looking at the city infrastructure cost somewhere in the neighborhood of what we know today, to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $14 million. And we have no idea how much insurance and FEMA is going to do a reimbursement. So the reserves that we have for current fund balance coming forward, I believe, will be invested in a great deal in that infrastructure. But that is what it is, and I kind of wish we had had that discussion to have more information from the city manager. But I support this. The only thing I'd like to hear my colleagues discuss is a potential allowance over the square footage from December 30th. One thing that staff was asking for direction on was, let's see, well, there were two things. Allow someone who had a home to go to a different lot. I would support that. I would also support that for the energy code option as well. So that's my comments. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, mayor. I really appreciate the comments by Councilmember Lay and Mayor Protem Maloney. Let me just start by saying that I really appreciate everyone showing up this evening, talking about some of the, just the incredible difficulties that you're going through and helping us to think through what the best policy is that's going to get you back home. I have a question for our staff, and I'm not sure who to direct this to, so city manager, you pointed in the right direction. But given the nature of the credit that we are now considering, I know that before we were talking about either paying from the general fund into the, into the various funds and then rebating out of the general fund. Is this now just a direct credit on these various funds?
The credit to the permit applicant avoids the liability that was created by the rebate program, which created that need to talk about transfers from the general fund. So this program right now doesn't create that problem for the city's budget.
So that's great. Okay, so this just creates, this is basically money that would have gone into these funds, historic preservation, capital improvement, whatever, now just doesn't flow into those funds.
That we don't collect, correct?
That we don't collect. So we're not collecting this money. It's just not going to go, okay, great. Yeah, I really appreciate that clarification. I wanted to talk about sort of what the mayor Protem brought up and also what the staff posed to us, just to tick down my sort of priorities here. I appreciate the, what the mayor Protem brought up about a 10% allowance. I think that's something that I could, would be willing to consider. You know, recognizing that there are challenges in, you know, especially if you're trying to get your home rebuilt, you may not have the best choices. I'm willing to, I'm willing to say that. But I do think that this principle that we have, to the mayor Protem's point, this principle that we have articulated from this dais over and over again about, you know, getting people back to what they had, 100% of the size of the home, use tax on 100% of the size of the home that they had prior to the fire, is incredibly important. So, you know, just like we've given some variances around sort of for, you know, the placement of people's homes in, you know, we did that back in January, you know, I'm willing to, I'm willing to consider an allowance in that, in that regard. When it comes to fire, folks who lost their homes, sort of moving from one lot to another, I think that's a reasonable thing to do as long as they had a, had a home in Louisville at the time of the fire that they lost. If they'd like to buy a new lot, I'd be willing to support that. And I can, I can support the same being applied to the energy code as well. So I think I'm on the same page as the, as the mayor Protem in this regard. So I appreciate everybody and, again, everyone's comments. But I, and I also really just want to say, I really appreciate the staff here because I really feel like what was presented to us tonight has really been a very accurate reflection of the, of the direction that we gave at previous meetings. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Most.
Yes, thank you. And I apologize for not being there tonight, but I am still congested and coughing, and hopefully I won't cough while I'm trying to talk. I just didn't want to share any of my sickness with anyone. So I appreciate being able to be here virtually and apologize to the folks that are, you know, that showed up today, particularly to speak, that I'm not there to hear you in person. And I, too, appreciate the comments of the council member. I appreciate people turning out to share with us. A couple of things, I, not only do I support allowing people in Louisville to change lots, I would support anybody whose house was impacted by the Marshall Fire, whether they lived in Superior or Boulder County. If they want to build in Louisville and they were impacted by the fire, I would like to see us provide those same benefits on the energy codes and whatever we decide to do on use tax. Okay, let's see. The other thing, and I've talked about this before, is that I would also like us to consider, I know I read, I think I read something about whether or not we're going to sunset this particular ordinance, but I would actually like us to consider that if we're going to do this, that we do this for anybody whose house burns down in Louisville through no fault of their own. Because anybody who loses their house, now granted, it's not, underinsurance is not always a problem. And if it's not a problem, you know, most people who lose individual homes, you know, aren't burning down to the foundations and that sort of thing. But I would like us to stay open to the possibility that if we're going to provide this for people that are really suffering from a profound trauma personally and financially, that we extend that to other people whose homes burned down. So I'd like to consider that. I'm, I think that I would be open to the 10% variance. We're doing that in terms of people being able to rebuild their homes. So I think if we're doing the variance on people, excuse me, being able to rebuild their homes, then I would be willing to do that on the use tax credit. I am a little bit, there's a couple of things I heard tonight that I'm, that I'm a little bit, I have a couple of questions about. One, and I think I read this in the packet, and maybe Planner Ritchie can respond to this or, I don't know, the city manager might be able to. I'm concerned about people who may be covered for use taxes as part of their insurance coverage if we issue this credit, if the insurance companies aren't just going to claw that back. And I don't know if there's anything, you know, whether that would happen or not happen. I don't know anything about that. But that's a concern because I certainly don't want to be providing additional benefits to the insurance companies. I'm sure most of you, if you haven't already, gotten your homeowner's insurance renewed. Everybody's going up 20%, 25%. Everybody, whether you were impacted or not. And so I just want to make sure that we're not turning more money over to the hands of the insurance companies because I don't think we need to be doing that. And two other quick points, and then I'm done. One is, I guess I'm a little bit confused, and maybe I don't understand the way houses are rebuilt, but it would seem to me if you're building a more energy-efficient house, that it would be more compact and smaller, if that's the primary motivation for energy efficiency. And I would, you know, I would hope that everybody would build as energy-efficient houses they possibly can, but that just seems a little bit incongruous to me. And then the last point I want to make, and this is something that's really, really important to me, is that this council voted against affordable housing, an affordable housing ordinance last week. And, you know, there was a comment earlier tonight about, you know, how affordable housing shouldn't be a priority. And I'm, I'm sorry... And I'm, I'm sorry, but I find that very, very difficult to hear, and I find it very difficult that that is the issue when people who had homes, who lost homes, are desperately trying to get back into their homes and, and facing challenges emotionally, personally, financially to do so, to not understand that people who can't afford housing, that people who are desperate to get into a home for the first time to find affordable housing, you know, also feel traumatized and also are, you know, dealing with tremendous personal and financial stress. And the people in our community who want to get into affordable housing are teachers and police officers and, you know, people, you know, small business owners. And, and I just, I just want to make sure that we're not setting up this, this sort of dichotomy where we're going to help one group of people with their housing issues, but we're not going to help another group of people with their housing issues.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Cal, thanks for your question. That was, I think, huge news, this, this idea, if you were here a couple of weeks ago, this one bucket versus other bucket issue, that, that we can receive these funds into one bucket and, well, not receive, basically not have that whole bucket analogy that, that was so difficult for us. And so that's wonderful news, and that really, for me, solves a big, big part of our problem. The underinsured, I'm, you know, I'm still in support, we've received some emails about the having to, you know, attest that we're underinsured. I think that is important. Maxine can mention that, you know, if you're, if you're covered, if your insurance covers your use tax, then that's great, have your insurance pay your use tax. And if it doesn't, check the box and then, and there we go. So I think it's not meant to not give a rebate to someone who's struggling. The, the point is that if the insurance is going to pay it, we don't need to rebate it. So I'm, I'm still in support in that part. You know, I think the, what do you call it, like land swapping or, or, you know, property swapping? I, I think that there is a small danger of people kind of gaming the system, and I'm more concerned with someone who isn't gaming the system, not getting the right treatment they need than I am about someone successfully gaming the system. And that might be, you know, I have seven properties in Lewisville and I'm going to do this and that, like, okay, so somebody might kind of game the system. But I think what's important is that when someone honestly lost their home in one lot and just wants to relocate to a different lot for 100 different reasons, that, that they're not losing out on all of this. So I, I can support that addition. What staff is asking for is, is to kind of consider a fire victim, a fire victim, if they're rebuilding in any fire lot, to let them be the same. So I can support that. The 10% buffer, I think that's reasonable. I think, I think the intention, right, is what, you know, everyone stated is, make people whole again. You had a 2,000 square foot home, you should be able to build a 2,000 square foot home. 2,200 is like, yeah, it's the same house. Like a 10, a 10% buffer is not a, a huge deal. You're obviously, you know, building a similar home. And obviously, the, the, the intent again is, even if you build a 2,500 square foot home, you're getting almost all your money back. I mean, the, the idea is, you know, that, that it's, it's super, well, it's, it's a, it's a very high rebate, because we had talked about like 50% rebate, a 75% rebate. I had, I had suggested just capping it, like 15,000 per person, no matter what your use tax is, just give everybody 15,000 bucks back. And I think this idea of, no, let's give them 110% potentially of their, of their former footprint I can get behind. So I don't, I don't have a lot to add, but I did want to make sure that I was on, on the record as supporting the things that I had heard. And, you know, I appreciate Councilmember Lay's start, and I, and I hope you guys do feel how much we care about you, and I know this is a really long process. I don't like government either. It takes a long time sometimes, and I'm, I'm sorry about that. And, but I do, I, I do think there's some animosity that doesn't need to exist in that we, there is an intention to be helpful and to, and to try to get us all to the finish line together. And sometimes it doesn't look that way, because you see us once a month up here and it just doesn't have a great feel. But I, I've felt a lot of camaraderie between our, our entire council and, and a lot of hope that you guys rebuild and rebuild quickly and rebuild a wonderful home and, and maybe a bigger home, and maybe a smaller home, and maybe a single floor master. That's awesome. We just want you to come back and, and be in our community again. And so I hope this is a small step in that direction, and, and it's slow and it's difficult, and I get that. I'm sorry about that, but we're on our way, I hope.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for your comments this evening and the previous meetings, really helpful. And hopefully you saw the comments that you've made at the previous meetings and by email were incorporated in what the staff worked on for us. So thanks so much for all of those ideas. It sounds like there is consensus around adopting the Greg Harms Rule, which Greg inspired. He was the person who asked us if we could have somebody that was in one lot move to another lot. And so it seems like there's consensus around that and that it would apply to any benefit program that we give out, and that it would be regardless of which municipality you started in. So I see all head nodding, so just to be clear, that's the direction on that. Sounded like there's consensus for doing a 10% buffer on the square footage. Sorry, I meant to go back on the Greg Harms Rule. I think we should use the new lot square footage. I just was trying to figure that out in my head as, as people were talking about the rebate program. So like you would have had a house and you'll be moving to a new lot. And the reason why people want to move, that we've heard from testimony from people, is that maybe they want to build a ranch instead of a two-story, and their old lot doesn't, their old lot configuration wouldn't allow a ranch, but the new lot they're swapping to would, things like that. So it seems like for the program, we would want to use the new lot square footage.
So the lot they're building on, the, the previous home, the, on the lot that they moved to?
Yeah, the lot that they moved to. Is that everybody think that that sounds about right?
Can I, just want to make sure you understand it?
Yeah.
That, that if I had a 2,000 square foot home on Lot A and I want to build on Lot B, we're considering what Lot B had, so as if I'm rebuilding Lot B's house?
Yes.
Not, not my house.
Yes.
So it's the lot that we're considering, not, not the owner?
I don't actually have strong feelings.
No, no, I just want to make sure.
But that's what I proposed.
I think I'm fine with that, I just.
That's what I pro, we need to give staff direction on whether they use Lot A or Lot B. And so I was proposing Lot B, but if there's good reason.
I just want to make sure I understood it, but I, I'm fine with it.
Looks like a lot of thumbs up and head nodding all around on that. Great. And so going back to the second point, which was around the 10% allowance, there was a lot of consensus around that. Is everybody good with 10%, whatever you had plus, plus 10%? Seeing nodding all the way around. There were a couple of topics that I didn't hear from anyone that were points of interest to discuss. One was, you know, whether this just applies to people's primary residence, or in the case where, you know, there are people that have many properties that were destroyed, how we would handle that. And I don't know that we've sorted that out, if we would have people attest that it's their primary residence. So I'd be interested for discussion around that point. And then the other discussion point I'd like to open up is, you know, we, we heard a lot that the reason people need to go up is for alert, you know, for energy efficiency and things like that. But as far as I know, very few homes have built to the 2021 IECC for the permits that we have so far. Can you clarify that for me?
I would have to check the numbers, but it's definitely not the majority.
So I guess I would like to propose just doing 100% rebate for anyone who builds to the 2021 IECC, not including the net zero code, just the IECC or better, as something for council to discuss. It doesn't seem to me, I know people have really good intentions, but I just don't know that we really have incentivized efficiency, and so I would rather just do 100% rebate on the 2021 IECC or better. So that doesn't include the net zero appendix. It's very achievable today. And I am, I mean, I know, I've made it clear with previous comments, but, you know, we've sought so many grants and rebates, and I look for ways to help make people be able to make that choice. And so this would be another way, I feel, that we could help accomplish that. So I saw Mayor Protem Maloney first, and then we'll jump to the other end.
Mayor, thank you for your comments. Just a point of clarification. So if someone builds a home regardless of the increase in square footage or anything, we would give 100% credit on the use tax?
That's what I proposed, if they were building the 2021 IECC or better. So 2021, or 2021 with net zero, or 2021 with passive.
Thank you. And from an administrative perspective, is that something that we feel is easy to do?
So I just want to double check, I heard, so we are tracking which, which energy option on every single permit, so we, we have that data upfront. And so I want to make sure I heard that. So if, you're saying if they build to 2021 or 2021 IECC, they get 100% of what they're actually building?
I didn't hear the very end of your sentence.
Sorry, 100% of what they're actually building?
100% use tax credit from the city of Lewisville.
There's no, there's, there's no comparison of their previous size.
Right, you would just, 100% use tax credit from the city of Lewisville. That, from an administration perspective, is much easier than comparing house size.
I, I can support that. Thank you, Mayor.
Just one clarification, which may be, it may be the same one, and maybe I just didn't, didn't get it the first time. Are you saying that there would be, no matter how big a home that they built on the property, we would give those folks 100% without dealing with the, the 10% allowance?
Yes. It would just be a use tax credit.
I don't, I mean, that's, I don't have any problem with that. I, in fact, I, what I wanted to, I'm delighted that you're offering, and it's, I'm delighted. This is a really good thing. Thank you for that.
Any other discussion? If, and just, I know it's, it's really hard, and I always hate to be the monster, but we can't cheer or anything because other people might have different views. And it's totally appropriate for people with varying views to come forward and tell us what they want to say, and we want to hear from everyone. So we can't cheer for one another. Any other points that we need to cover this evening? Councilmember Most, and then I have a question for staff.
Just quickly, I, I think it's a brilliant idea, Mayor Stolzmann. I, I, I think it's fantastic, and I am 100% behind that. Anybody who wants to build to the 2020 codes, full rebate, regardless of size.
Thank you. And so I heard Mayor Protem Maloney say something that was different than my interpretation of what the next steps were going to be. So do we have to talk about this again, or announced it's in staff's court and you'll administer the program?
No. In order to do the credit program, this needs to come back to you in the form of an ordinance, so we would have first reading and second reading.
All right. So when it, do we have a date for first and second reading?
I would pull up the advanced agenda. Do you know it offhand?
Actually, it's, first reading would be October 11th. And there's a required three weeks between the hearings because it's a code adoption, so second reading would be October 25th.
Can we do it on, as an emergency ordinance? Our, our council members comfortable with that? So that we, as building permits come in, then we wouldn't have to issue as many refunds?
Building permits or adopting codes requires special publication requirement, there's three requirements and 15 days in between, so I don't know if.
I don't know that we're amending the building codes, per se.
I guess what I would just give a staff direction is if we can adopt this as an emergency ordinance, that we should consider bringing it forward in that way.
We'll confirm and bring it back as quickly as we can.
And I think, you know, there's a, there's a voting difference there. In my sense is you guys are all in consensus, so I think that that might be something we could look at. We'll talk, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, if there's a reason why it's inappropriate to do it that way, or it makes the program not doable, obviously you'll bring it forward as two readings, but it just seems that that would reduce the number of people that have to pay and then get a refund. So that would be positive. Any other discussion on this topic? We didn't close the loop on the multiple homes. I'm not going to, if someone has many homes, there are some instances where people have many, many properties that were destroyed, I think, if we just let it lie. Is that okay with folks? Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would even say, sort of as a matter of principle, it's, that was a condition that existed before the fire happened. You know, there were people who obviously had homes, either they were speculating on them or they were using to rent their, whatever. And I don't think we should treat them any differently than anybody else for those.
It's, the only reason I even brought it up, we're not doing the program for businesses. So it is different if they're speculative in businesses, like this is a homeowner program. So, but I think if we let it lie, it's fine. Looks like consensus around letting it lie. Okay. Any other points on this for staff to bring back as an ordinance? All right, City Manager Drabbin, do you need any more information from us?
No, I think you outlined the direction very well, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, everybody. So next, oh, we still have time. Next on our agenda this evening is Resolution Number 38, Series 2022, a resolution conditionally approving a nine-month-long temporary use as a precursor to a permanent use to allow construction and operation, oh, Councilmember Fahy, he's coming back, that's good, construction and operation of an outdoor beer garden associated with the Rocky Mountain Tapin Garden located at 1077 Courtesy Road. I'll open the public hearing and ask for any disclosures. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a quick disclosure. I have, I do know this applicant. It's a small town, so I'm sure it's difficult not to know people. I do not believe that my personal, knowing, knowing this applicant would influence my judgment in any way. And so I'm, I intend to, to be a fair and impartial quasi-judge in this particular case. But I do want to make, just so that there is no, no sense of impropriety, I want to make that disclosure.
Thank you for the disclosure. Any other disclosures from folks? All right, seeing no conflicts of interest, we'll turn it over to our staff. Elizabeth K. Marquetti, did I say it correctly?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Perfect. And she'll tell us about the project.
Good evening, councilors. I'm Elizabeth K. Marquetti, Senior Planner on behalf of city staff. Thank you again for the opportunity to present this item before you, which is a resolution approving a nine-month-long temporary use as a precursor to a permanent use to allow construction and operation. Let me just fix my camera. Apologies, okay, you're caught up with me. So this is a resolution approving a nine-month-long temporary use as a precursor to a permanent use to allow construction and operation of an outdoor beer garden as part of Rocky Mountain Tapin Gardens' operation at 1077 Courtesy Road. The item has been properly noticed in preparation for tonight's public hearing. Also here tonight are Paul Rossi and Garrett Nicodemus, owners of Rocky Mountain Tapin Garden, who will be available to answer any of your questions. So this image is an aerial photo from two years ago depicting the then vacant lot in the red rectangle. Let me see if my mouse catches up. Here we go. This is the subject site here. The yellow rectangle shows the space currently occupied and being operated by Rocky Mountain Tapin Garden. It is a small part of a larger commercial structure within the D-Lo development. Bless you. This image is a portion of Page Two from the D-Lo Plaza PUD, which originally approved a drive-through retail commercial use on the .64 acre site, which is also zoned mixed-use residential. Since 2015, the site has remained vacant until very recently, when the applicants began to grade the site and started installing some improvements for the beer garden. The beer garden had a grand opening event during the recent Labor Day weekend as well. The lot is currently owned by Mr. Stephen Tebow, who has authorized this application to proceed. This is the temporary use plan, and I'll describe its components after reviewing the relevant sections of the Louisville Municipal Code that govern temporary uses as a precursor to a permanent use. First, outdoor dining is an allowed accessory use in the mixed-use zone district, and approval of a planned unit development or a special review use is required. The applicant requests approval of a temporary use permit as a precursor to a permanent use. They anticipate approval of an amendment to the D-Lo Plaza PUD, which would authorize the permanent use as a beer garden. A temp use as a precursor to a permanent use typically requires approval of the PUD first. However, staff recommends an exception because this is in support of an existing restaurant and the applicant's already begun operations of the beer garden. The nine-month timeframe is meant to ensure adequate time to complete the PUD amendment process. And again, this assumes the PUD is approved by the city council. So that was the regulatory framework for all of this. So back to the beer garden itself. The dark gray area here on the left, and, so, so this is the west, sorry, north is up. To your right here is Courtesy Road. This is Short Street. And entrance into the site is through a 20 to 25-foot wide drive aisle here. The larger existing commercial structure is, is here to the west. is, is here to the west. So the dark gray area is Crusher Fines. The lighter stippled area is artificial turf. Patrons enter the area through the break in the perimeter fence that's been installed, which aligns with the crosswalk that goes directly towards the front door of the beer garden. There are picnic tables with umbrellas for shade on the west, and there are lawn games on the artificial turf. Planter boxes help create a barrier along the eastern border, and within the site help differentiate and break up the space between the seating area and the outdoor gaming area. Not gaming, games. There is a small shed in the lower right corner, which will store the outdoor games and other equipment. The space is fenced along the northern border, the western border, and the southern border. It must be noted that there are a few differences between the exhibit included in the staff report and what's been installed so far at the beer garden. What's not on the exhibit are festival lights strung above the Crusher Fines area, along with small solar-powered full cutoff lights that have been installed on the top of the fence posts, and a stage for performers at the far eastern end. These items were installed since the most recent version of the site plan was submitted. All of the lighting are small LED bulbs, and these can be reviewed and analyzed for compliance with the applicable regulations during the PUD process, unless city council would prefer to see the results of a staff analysis before making a final determination tonight. If council is comfortable proceeding with the information provided so far, then staff is recommending a new third condition of approval, specifically that the applicant submit a revised site plan depicting all of their improvements. If council needs more information in order to make a final decision, then tonight's hearing could be continued with a request for more information on the lighting or other improvements. Staff's analysis of the beer garden's design in the subject site is that it complies with the criteria in Section 17.60.10.D and 17.16.180.8.5 of the Louisville Municipal Code. The beer garden is essentially an extension of an existing restaurant and bar in a commercial area in close proximity to many potential customers. The temporary improvements could be removed by the applicant if needed, and a restoration agreement between the applicant, the city, and the landowner has recently been completed. This agreement establishes the applicant's responsibility to restore the site to its original native grass condition should the beer garden be abandoned or the PUD amendment request be denied by city council. The agreement also provides the city with financial surety, so that the city could restore the site should the applicant fail to do so. Lastly, the site is served by the existing parking lot, the long-term adequacy of which will be closely examined during the PUD review process. As of this evening, staffs received two public comments, one of which was a complaint about amplified sound during the Labor Day weekend event. Staff is proposing a second condition that makes sense, given the proximity of the beer garden to nearby residential neighborhoods, specifically that amplified sound only be allowed between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., and that any speakers must be pointed east away from the nearby residences. Therefore, staff recommends approval with the following three conditions. One, that the temporary use permit shall not be issued until city receives the restoration agreement and financial surety. Two, that amplified sound is only allowed between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., and that speakers must be pointed east and away from nearby residences. And three, that submission of a revised site plan depicting all current improvements be submitted. This concludes my presentation. Thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Is there an applicant presentation this evening? Great.
They have indicated there's no presentation, but they're happy to answer questions.
You're welcome to make any comments, if you wanted to make any general comments. Thank you. Any councilmember questions or discussion? Councilmember Brown?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Planner K. Marquetti, for your presentation, and I appreciate it. One of the things that I'm a little bit perplexed by is considering a permit, a temporary use permit, after it seems that this particular site has already been improved upon as well as been put to use. Can you please explain to, explain what's going on there, and whether it's typical for the city to essentially allow people to do the things that they then later apply for?
So this applicant has been working with the city for quite a while. It was last spring that they first approached the city with an application for a special review use that they were considering initially a somewhat different concept, and had not done anything to the site yet, and were contemplating a mobile food truck court as a way to proceed. And they worked with the city staff for several months on that concept and then paused, and were exploring other options to potentially begin operating this site more quickly. And in the back and forth with city staff about possible ways for them to proceed, it was expressed by the applicant that they were fairly confused about the various entitlement processes open to them, and were under the impression that they could, because of the existing entitlements on the site, because of the D-Lo PUD, they thought that the D-Lo PUD entitled them to allow them to regrade the site, and began making changes to the property under the existing PUD. When city staff became aware that somebody was changing the conditions on the site, we went and did a site visit and reached out to the applicants and said, wait, please stop. What, what are you doing? And we had conversations with them where they expressed genuine confusion about what they were actually entitled to do. The issue, the city issued a stop work order, which they complied with, and we said, okay, yes, please, let's come back and talk about the appropriate path to take. As it turns out, what we're discussing this evening is the path that they ultimately wanted to pursue for the short term. They decided that they thought this would be the fastest way to get to yes, in order to start taking advantage of this vacant land. And so they've been diligently working with staff on refining this plan and coming up with, making, ironing out the details of a restoration agreement, which is a big part of how staff got to any level of comfort about how we were to proceed here, ensuring that the city was going to end up with financial backstop in case either the temporary use permit got denied this evening, or the PUD amendment was denied by city council in the future, or something went wrong with their business and they decided they needed to back out of the beer garden. So staff thought, rather than stopping them in their tracks as they were partway through pursuing what we took to, we, we could only assume was a good faith effort to expand their business, we gave them the benefit of the doubt to, to continue through this process. They attended the planning commission hearing on this question in August, and again, the applicants expressed confusion. They thought that the planning commission, in their recommendation of approval, was all that they needed in order to proceed on the site. And so they started, as of August, fully building out the site to the condition that it's in today. Staff became aware of that sometime shortly before Labor Day weekend, that in fact, what's out there now was in place around late August, and again, had conversations with the applicants about, hey, why did you do this? You should proceed carefully, especially considering, we made them aware that they're operating without a permit. And unfortunately, to answer the last part of your question, this is not necessarily an anomaly in the city of Louisville. There are other businesses in downtown Louisville and around the city who are operating their businesses with improvements that they have made after having received final approval by city council. They have made changes to their built environments without going through proper entitlement processes. And that is a reality in the city of Louisville today.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, thank you very much. So Planner K. Marquetti, so this is a systemic problem that we, as a staff and as a city, have not, so first of all, I have concern...
Please.
So I'm not exactly sure what Ms. K. Marquetti is referring to with other systemic issues. From, certainly from time to time, we do find businesses that have installed various improvements that we think probably aren't in compliance with PUDs or other approvals. We typically try to work with them over time. You know, certainly when things rise to a level of, you know, maybe we think they're dangerous, they don't have proper life safety permitting, we take immediate action on those things that are, you know, more aesthetic, that are more zoning issues. We have a lighter hand. We make note of them. We do try to work with people over time to bring them into compliance. I think this is a similar situation where, you know, there was confusion. They developed the site. We didn't think there was any immediate life safety issues with their operations for a few weeks until they got to city council. So we, frankly, we didn't have a heavy hand in issue a stop work order, put up a red sign, or anything like that pending this approval.
So I just want to take a moment of privilege and just sort of reset for a moment. So I think there may be, like, multiple tracks the conversation could take from this point, and I just want to encourage us to consider the application in front of us, and then if we need to schedule future agenda topics to talk about, you know, more broadly, how we enforce zoning, or talk with the city manager in our weekly one-on-ones more broadly about some of those issues, I think we should take those and kind of separate them out, if possible. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you keeping us within the realm of the consideration of this application. Yeah, I appreciate the confusion that folks might have with our process. I am, I appreciate you clarifying the process here. I, I find it very unusual, kind of the situation that we are in with this particular applicant and this particular application. And, but I will, to your point, I will apply the law in the, in the particularly inappropriate way, recognizing that, you know, knowledge, lack of knowledge of the law is not a defense necessarily, and that, you know, I would not encourage other applicants to proceed in this particular way.
Thank you. Other questions from council members, or should we take public comment? Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had just a couple of really simple questions. I mean, you know, I've been on council for seven years, and I've never seen a precursor situation. I haven't. I haven't seen it. I don't think we've had one since I've been on council, so. Two of them have been on longer than me, so I, I'm not used to this procedure.
Right. I have not seen it as well, other than in the code. We have taught, I mean, over the six and a half years I've been with the city, we've talked to a couple of property owners about potentially pursuing this type of permit for various reasons, because they were trying to get up and running and needed some facilities and things like that. So, you know, when this issue came up, and we'd been working with this applicant for quite a few months, and, you know, they were interested in proceeding, and had actually started work, and then we issued the stop work order, we were really, you know, we do this with a lot of applicants. We try, we try to solve the problem within the legal bounds of the code. And so we became aware of this code. We thought this could fit, this could give them a process, a legal avenue to move forward. It doesn't, there's nothing in the code that requires that you have to have a PUD to have a precursor use, but we thought that's how we would, that's how we had talked with other property owners about it. We thought it was a good policy to require it, but that we could, you know, in this instance, you know, we could have flexibility as long as we had that restoration agreement. All of this kind of comes together for us, so.
Well, I, I appreciate the applicant's energy and enthusiasm. We don't want to stem that too much. The...
I agree.
You know, the, the, as long as the precursor is a process we can employ, that's, that was really what I was asking. Another question I have is what, in the presentation and in the packet, basically said that there was adequate parking. When I look at that open area, and it's pretty large, how do we determine the occupancy of that area versus the parking? And if you could just help me understand that a little bit, that would be great.
Sure. So, hmm. In full disclosure, when we began crafting the materials for both the planning commission and city council hearings, it wasn't clear that all of the retail space in that existing commercial structure was leased up yet. There were one, if not two, spaces that were, at that time, vacant. And so there was less concern among staff about any possibility of, of inadequate inadequacy of parking. We now are aware that all of the spaces are fully leased. And so what we anticipate doing is, in the review of the PUD process, in the PUD review process, rather, we're going to be, what we've talked about internally is, is using the square foot, footage of the space enclosed by the fence as the basis, and we would, we would use the same ratio that's in the code to establish the quantity of parking that, that is required for restaurants or indoor eating establishments. So during the PUD process, we will, we will measure that square footage against that ratio required by the city code, and, and make that determination at that time.
Okay. And then I have one more question. It's really, I mean, this is a beer garden. It's outdoor, so that, you know, the question about security, making sure people are staying within the confines of the beer garden, how is all of that done?
I will probably defer to the applicant to talk about the details of, of their security staffing plan.
Okay.
I would just mention that from a plant, from the planning side, we did work with them to make sure there was a solid barrier around the site, because we were concerned with that. I think there's liquor licensing standards that had to be met, so they had to meet that. But the planning staff did also require a solid barrier around certain portions of the site at a minimum to create a safety barrier, especially against the highway. That morphed into a full fence because of the liquor licensing requirements.
Okay, so you're...
Would it be helpful to look at the exhibit again? I can kind of...
No, I think that's okay. I'm just looking for an assurance that that was considered as part of this process.
Absolutely.
And then the last question is, if we approve this resolution tonight, it's only for nine months, and then it's over. So they, anything going forward, they would have to, if nothing happens in the nine months, then the site has to be back to being dirt, or grass, or whatever it was. And we, we are not encumbered in the future for any commitment on that site unless they come forward with a change of the PUD.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Most?
Thanks. I just would appreciate going through this timeline again, so I can understand what happened. I think what you said was that there was some activity on the site that you became aware of in the spring. You went and talked to the applicants to stop doing work because they didn't, they didn't, they had, didn't have permission to do that on the site. They went through a process. They got a approval through the planning commission on the 11th, and assumed that now they then could do the work. There was no permit issued to do any of this work. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I, I guess I kind of find it shocking that a commercial enterprise that has already gone through a permitting process, on some level, to build out their restaurant, I'm assuming, would, especially after being told once in the spring that, that they didn't have approval to do this, to go do this, and then apparently to throw a party on Labor Day. So I'm just having a little bit of trouble with that, because I'm imagining that, you know, in, in other circumstances, and certainly for residents in this community, if people were doing work and without a permit, and it was discovered they weren't doing work without a permit, I think we have a whole series of fines that we impose for doing that sort of thing. So I'm, as much as I agree with Mayor Protem Maloney, I think it's great. It sounds like a good use. It sounds like something that's kind of consistent with the, what we're trying to create in that part of the community, but I, I am just very, very concerned with the idea that, that a business in this community just kind of went and did whatever they wanted to do. And, and I, I'm very uncomfortable with the, with the... And I'm very uncomfortable with the, with the, I don't know, standard that sets. And I appreciate the planning departments wanting to work with businesses in our community to support them, but I'm, I'm just uncomfortable with this. And I, it's hard for me to imagine that they had a Labor Day, that there was a full-on party going on there, Labor Day, on a site that, where there was no permit, where we really didn't have any information about what was happening there. That, to me, is a huge concern. And, you know, I think that we have ordinances and laws and rules for a reason and that we expect people to follow them. And when people don't follow them, that they, there's consequences, not rewards necessarily. So I'm, I'm just very uncomfortable with that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. I guess I'll just chime in. I just have a very different perspective. I appreciate, that's why there's seven of us, we can all come at things from various angles and think about things differently and have a discussion about it. I very, I very much understand the point. You know, if someone starts building a building and gets a backhoe and digs a foundation and, you know, puts up a structure, they need to have a building permit and things like this. But I can actually really understand what happened in this circumstance. Like there's already, there's an approved restaurant with an outdoor patio, already approved. So like outdoor drinking and dining and fun having is already allowed. And then there's a weed lot right next to it and they're like, well, can we have, like, can we put some AstroTurf down there? We're not going to change anything, we're just going to put some plastic on the ground and then drink over there too, instead of just right here. And so it's like, that doesn't really seem like it needs a permit, because you're not building anything, you're putting some tables and some plastic on the ground, right next to the tables and the plastic that's already on the ground. So I can understand why somebody might think they wouldn't need a permit for that, because it's not the same, you know, general public or even a business owner or someone who's built a building might think, I need a permit if I'm going to build a foundation and a drive-through and parking spaces and, you know, I'm going to go in and talk to the city. But I can understand why this level of improvement, it wasn't obvious that they would need to come in for a special review use and that, you know, they're using the same use that they already have approval for in one space in a directly adjacent space. And so somebody might just think, well, I'm just extending one thing, but in our world, it's two different lots. So it's a new, it's a new case for us. But if you're just sitting there looking at it, it's like, well, that's not two things, that's just more drinking from right here over here. So I don't feel as strongly about what happened. I do feel strongly about generally the comments that are made about enforcing the rules and making sure people come in for permits. And it sounds like we worked really hard with the applicant to get this all corrected. I just can understand in this circumstance why it's, you might just be like, could I just put tables over there and start having fun? We're going to throw bean bags also. Hey, come join us on Labor Day, it'll be really fun. So I guess I'm less upset about it all. And I just would make a couple of comments about noise, because I feel like that's the intention of staff on the speakers. Probably, Meredith can correct me if I'm wrong, I think three times since I've been on council, we've tried to talk about noise sort of holistically, so that individual property owners don't all have to be individually regulated with regard to noise. And I genuinely believe that that's the right approach, is to have a standard for noise and to not have each property owner have a separate standard that applies to their property from an enforcement standpoint. And from a community understanding standpoint, I think it creates a tremendous amount of confusion. When we've tried to talk about this, the two or three times that I have failed to achieve this over time, business owners that have already gotten these special allowances come forward and they say, we don't want this, we don't want noise rules, because we already are allowed to make noise. So they come and testify against it, but I really think it would be better for everyone, including them, if we just applied uniform standards for noise. So if in this district, we don't want amplified music after nine or 10 or 11 or 12 or whatever the time is, I think it should be uniformly applied. And so I'm not in favor of the noise requirements on this particular application, because I just do not think it's enforceable. I do think our existing noise ordinances would apply, which means that the police can be called if a neighbor thinks it's too loud, as likely happened on Labor Day, and the police can go and make a judgment if it is unreasonably loud. But I do think we could do better about defining that as a council. So those are my comments. Any other council comments or questions? And then we'll take public comment. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, process notwithstanding, I think this is a great application, great use of the space, great activation of ISOR. And as Mayor said, an extension of a current use. Obviously, the risk is on you guys, right? You went pretty far without full approval and now you're going to go another nine months without full approval. Like, it's a lot of risk out there that, you know, the decision could go poorly at some point, like, oh my God, we have to tear this all up, this is ridiculous. So that's, that's the risk. But what I see before us is great and it's a great use, and I'll be happy to vote in favor of it. And it just kind of sounds like one of those moments of, whoa, 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 you need to ask permission, like, oh, sorry, asking permission. Yes, go ahead. We didn't do it right, right? We didn't do it right, but I don't think there's any maliciousness or any incompetence. I think it's just a part of the process that wasn't, wasn't done as typical, but I'm in support of what's in front of us tonight.
I'm just going to jump over and take public comment, because I fear I accidentally led us into council comments without getting the full testimony. And so we can reconsider any of the points that any of us have made. And I will go to the members of the public and hear comments. So the first commenter is the member of the public ending in 5285. And you look like you're muted on your end.
Hello, council?
There you are.
There we go. Hello, Ms. Mayor, City Council, Mike Duborsky, 601 Pine Street, here in Louisville. I happen to have a business just within, I'd say, a nine iron away from this location and travel by it daily. And I think we all can remember when the Lucky Pie put in the artificial turf, I thought, holy smoke, Brennan, what are you thinking? And that turned out to be a huge success, as we all know. And I'd like to see this be a replay of what we saw there. The applicant clearly has brought up the neighborhood, because quite frankly, Mr. Tebow doesn't do such a good job of maintaining his weed. So that, by virtue of the upgrade they've already made, I think it's a win for all of this as well. So I just would like to encourage council to support this, regardless of the process and how we got here. And I think the noise, quite frankly, will not be an issue. I drove by there intentionally when they had their band out, what was it, over Labor Day? And although, you know, it was noticeable from my location, it wasn't bothersome, you know, and it kind of had a, the music vibe that I hear from, from my home with downtown Louis, and it's kind of attracting. So I think it'd be a great addition to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, back to council discussion. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm in support of this. I think it's an excellent use of the space. I agree with the terminology being used by colleagues, it's really an extension of a use. I do want to note, Councilor Most does have a point. We need to make sure, however we do this, whether it's the applicant or the city or code enforcement or wherever it might be, you know, we all need to do a better job in making sure that the applicants know what they can and they can't do in the appropriate timeframe. But I'm prepared to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 38, Series 2022, with the conditions outlined by staff.
Is there a second? There's a second from Councilmember Lake, and we can continue discussion. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the Mayor Protem's motion. I'm willing to support this, this application. I think the, the issues that we've raised about the process, clearly our planning process is confusing. I get confused as a council member. I've learned more about planning in this role than I ever thought I would know. I will also say that sort of the permitting process and whether or not, you know, work should proceed or be stopped is really an issue of enforcement. And in my opinion, this, we need to consider the sort of application on its face. And so with that, I believe that the, the conditions outlined in the packet and in the municipal code have been met. And so I concur with the staff's findings and I'll support the motion.
Councilmember Lake?
Yes, I, I support this tupu, what we call it, tupu? Temporary use? Yeah, I don't know, that's what I, tupu, application. I think it meets the, the requirements. And I hope that, that to the extent others come forward and want to use this, that they do it in a correct way. And good for you for finding a way to manage all this. I have, I appreciate staff's judgment in this case not to issue a stop work order. And I think that's what we, we vest that authority in you. And I think that worked out just fine here. So I'm going to support.
Any other discussion? I'm fine with the motion that was made and I can vote in support of it. But I also would vote in support of it if you remove the amplified sound condition of approval, just because of the comments that I made, that I do think it's more equitable to not do it on a lot-by-lot basis.
If it's not in there, then it.
It's in there.
No, no, I mean, if, sorry, if we get rid of it, then it reverts just to.
Our underlying code, so if someone had a noise complaint, they would call the police.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it wasn't like, you can't have, it's just going to the, the general code and not a specific one for this lot.
That's what my intention was.
Okay. I mean, I'm, sorry, is that a formal amendment?
No, no, I wasn't, I was sort of.
I'm okay with it.
Opening it for discussion as a point. And then the other point that I would open for discussion is just, I don't know how nine months was arrived at. And I just have some concern with the load in our, on our side, that maybe we would want to make it like a 15-month, just because of all of our load with, you know, Redtail Ridge, with 550 permits. I just think we have a lot of things on our plate and nine months has gone fast.
The code allows you to go up to a year.
Okay, so 12 months would be my proposal. Or maybe we redefine a year here in this hearing and then we could do a 15-month year.
Are you making a friendly amendment?
A friendly amendment to do 12 months.
I accept the friendly amendment to go to a year.
And then just if there's discussion around the noise.
How about the secondor?
Oh, does the secondor agree?
I accept the second, I don't accept the first. I think the noise condition should remain the same. That's the turning of the, the.
Turning of the speakers and that the noise has to be shut off by 9:00 PM.
No, I'll, I'll withdraw. Go ahead. I agree with the amendment.
Mayor Protem Maloney, do you have any feeling?
I believe that we should treat all of the venues the same.
Yeah.
So.
So just to clarify, so the, so I guess I'll make it as a friendly amendment to remove the amplified sound condition and that we're changing the length of time from nine months to 12 months.
I agree.
And the secondor agrees. Is, is there any other discussion? I know that went kind of fast, so if folks want to discuss that further. Any other discussion? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. I appreciate that this is, I realize that we want to treat every venue the same. I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the sound amendment. I'd prefer to keep the staff recommendation on the sound.
Other folks? I can be persuaded either way. This isn't something that, I just, I think that right now, as a matter of fact, the police are going to enforce it the same way either way. Like, they're not going to pull up this PUD and be like, oh, it's 9:00 PM, turn off your speakers. They're going to be like, is it too loud or is it not too loud? And they'll use their judgment. And so I, that's why I was proposing it, is I'm trying to, it seems like, from an enforcement standpoint and an equity standpoint, that what we have written here isn't really going to happen. But I can go along with it, I just think it will have the same outcome. Councilmember Brown? I think we can get to a 7-0, so I don't want to create like a, a division around this point.
I mean, I'm still, I still would prefer the other, but I appreciate what everybody's trying to do. I'm not going to vote against the, the application just on this, this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Do folks generally feel like it's better now, the way we've amended it? Or did people, do people think we've made it worse? Because I would hate to have offered an amendment that generally people feel like it's worse, but they can live with.
I, I appreciate your amendments.
I do too.
Okay, okay, excellent. So seeing no other discussion on this topic, we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 38, as, as written, with two minor changes. One is to change nine months to 12, and the second is to remove the condition around sound. Any other discussion of the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, everyone, the motion carries. Next, we, it's 8 o'clock, so next we will take a 10-minute break. It's 8:04, so we'll be back at 8:14. Shall we get started again? Good work. Shall we get started again? All right, let's get started again. Thank you, everyone. The next order of business this evening is Agenda Item D, Discussion Direction. It's our City Manager's Proposed 2023-2024 Operating and Capital Budget, 2023 to 2028 Capital Improvements Plan, and 2023 to 2028 Long-Term Financial Plan. We'll set the public hearing for October 18th, 2022. So that's when we can get a bunch of great comments from folks and in between now and then. But tonight, we'd just love to hear a high level overview from our City Manager, Jeff Turbin.
Probably need help from the clerk to open up my presentation. Oh, no, almost there. Excellent. Thanks, Meredith. Good evening. I'm going to start off by saying, on the agenda, it says the City Manager's Budget. This is our budget and we're presenting it. Staff, staff has worked really hard. It's been a rough year. It's been a weird year. And I appreciate council's patience, staff's patience, finance especially, as we work through all the challenges related to the budget this year. Two people in particular really stepped up. Kevin Watson and Megan Davis, I believe they're both online with us, as, as well as all the directors. And we have challenges ahead of us. So I'm just going to run through, as the mayor indicated, a high level perspective. And, and again, this is my first budget presentation with you. It's also that oddest and weirdest feeling I've had, because I've done a lot of these. And it's just a really different year and all different challenges that we're facing. So first, I'm going to run through what's in your packet, to outline it for council as well as for the public. And I really appreciate having public that stayed for this presentation. I was disappointed to see, I thought everybody was here tonight for the budget presentation earlier, but I really did. Next time, maybe. In the, in the package, you have a transmittal letter. It's a little bit different than the format you've seen in the past. In the past, the transmittal letter has included the executive summary. My style is a little bit different. And the transmittal letter is the first two pages. And then there's an executive summary attached to that. It's all the same information you've seen in the past, though, updated for, you know, our current recommendation. So the transmittal letter itself basically provides kind of a general, high level overview. You have the recommended 23-24 biannual budget by fund. The recommended 23-24 biannual budget by program and subprogram. The recommended 23 to 28 Capital Improvements Plan. And some highlights. The City Manager introduction, budget message, and general overview of financial position and challenges. I think it's really important to point out that the 21-22 budget, it did not anticipate the Marshall Fire. And when we, on December 29th, December 31st, we were in a lot different financial position than we are today. December 31st, '21, the general fund balance was $12.5 million. December 31st, 2022, we're projecting $11.7 million. So a reduction there. The long-term financial plan protects, projects a continued fund balance declines towards 2028. And I think it's really important to point out that, that we're still working through some of the things that are going to change this. Some of the things being our anticipated reimbursement from insurance, as well as FEMA for roughly $14 million in expenditures, city facilities, city infrastructure, city revenue loss. And the budget as presented anticipates full reimbursement of all those expenses. I don't think we're going to be there, but we're working through what that would look like. Insurance, as, you know, you've, you've heard from property owners, we're dealing with the same things as far as difficulty working through our insurance policy with our insurance carrier. Ours has a, has a lot more layers and we've got a whole team working on that. So we may see several million more dollars of expenses that are not reimbursed. So we'll continue to work on that and as we go forward, we'll update those numbers with you. In 2022, City Council also approved two budget amendments that reduced, or recognized, I should say, reduced revenues and appropriated additional expenditures specific to the Marshall Fire. Things like lost sales tax revenue, reduced property tax revenues, PPDR, debris removal programs, et cetera, additional staffing. And that just further challenges our, our, our budget future. I think this graph, it's in the executive summary as well as the transmittal letter, really tells the, the big story, where you see expenditures in 2022 going up, the revenue lines going up. But that, that's where we're talking about revenue from insurance and FEMA and so forth. So those numbers are going to change as we go a little, little farther into this. And you can see the yellow bar, the green bar, it's yellow on this one, those declines in fund balance. And the target line is that white dotted line. So in our, in our six-year projection, we're heading towards that direction. So overall, we're looking being, our recommendation is a conservative budget. Let's make sure we maintain essential operations, maintain our existing assets and facilities, and continue to support fire recovery. I guess I jumped ahead of myself. The executive summary includes revenue assumptions, operating expenditure targets, inter-fund transfers, citywide budget summaries, capital improvements plan highlights, and long-term financial plan summary. The budget documents are pretty, I mean, it's a, I don't know if it's an inch, three quarters of a packet. So the executive summary is intended to provide a high level summary for people who don't want to wade all the way through all the details. But the details are provided in all those attachments for you. The schedule, looking forward. October 3rd, City Council scheduled to review the recommended budget at a regular meeting. October 18th, City Council scheduled to conduct a public hearing on the recommended budget, as the mayor mentioned earlier. October 25th, special meeting to review recommended budget. And we anticipate adoption by City Council on November 15th. We don't expect, but we anticipate adoption. Thank you, as I said earlier, to the staff and all of you who have been working on this. This is a tremendous effort, a team effort. And I just want to acknowledge that. And point out that the budget is not just an annual exercise and collection of numbers, but rather an expression of our values and assumptions. I think that the annual or biannual budget adoption frankly is one of the most important decisions that council makes. It really sets the tone for all the work that we do in the community and our values. So that's all I've got for you tonight.
Thank you very much. We'll go to the public and see if any, any members of the public would care to comment on this topic this evening. Seeing none, that takes us back over to council. I just want to thank the staff on, on behalf of the community for all the work that's gone into this. This is just the first in several budget hearings. And so, you know, people will still have time to weigh in and, and give other feedback on, you know, places to change things or make things better. And there'll be pros and cons to each one. I'm sure we'll have a lot of good input from the community throughout the budget season on this. And I just appreciate, you know, staff's willingness to try to incorporate, you know, the comments we've made so far to balance the budget in a way that addresses fire response, but also other high priority community needs and really focusing on maintaining what we have. So thank you for hearing us so far and look forward to continuing to work together. And you said you don't expect we'll adopt a budget, I guess. I, I'm sure we will adopt a budget since state law requires it and there's even a procedure if we can't get around to adopting one. So I'm certain.
At some point, I'm sure you will.
I'm certain we will adopt a budget, one way or another. But I'm, I'm also sure that through this process of collaborating, we'll come up with something really great for the community. Mayor Proton Maloney.
I'm going to, I'm going to sit down to take notes, if that's okay.
I prefer you stand.
Wait, he's just kidding. He's, he's just kidding. Please sit down.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for your comments and thanking the staff. And I want to recognize Finance Director Emeritus Kevin Watson, who's with us, you know, on the, on the call. Thank you very much for all of your work on this. You are retired. It's amazing the work you put into this during the, the ending of your tenure at the City of Louisville. So thank you very much for that. And I want to thank Deputy City Manager Davis, who really shepherds this process. And, and as we all know, and as the mayor mentioned, you know, all the staff's involved. And if you want to know what we really care about, it's in the budget, right? It's, it's really what our priorities are. So I want to start off with something fun. And yes, I read all the details. So one of the, one of the fun things, and I, I think the library director is on the call as well, but. So one of the KPIs, so the key performance indicators for, for the library, was 18 books were checked out per registered borrower. So that's one and a half books per registered borrower in Louisville. And I know the mayor probably checked out 1,000 books, but it all averages out. But, you know, those, those type of things, those type of measurements are very important in program budgeting. You know, I just picked a fun one, but, you know, there's a lot of other ones we'll want to talk about when we get deeper into the budgets and how we make decisions based upon data, how we determine where resources go, whether it be a reduction of resources or increase in, in resources. Because we know there's areas, Police Department is one, where we're seeing a lot more officer contacts just because of the nature of what's going on in our city. So I just wanted to pick out something fun, but I will be looking with that kind of lens as we get deeper into it. And City Manager Agreed, 2023 needs to be conservative. What you laid out is the Marshall Fire impact, as we know today, is 14 million. We are hoping we're going to get half of that. So one of my first questions is, if we go back to that chart you had up there with fund balances, does that reflect half of the insurance and FEMA funding of that $14 million?
No, the, the budget as presented is based upon full reimbursement of all those expenditures.
Okay, so if I went back to that chart, I would subtract, based on what we're guessing, $7 million in 2028, I think is what that is, which puts us down to about $1 million in fund balance. So that's something for us to, to be very, very much aware of. The other thing that we talked about at the budget retreat back in July, because our sales taxes were so aggressive through the beginning of the year. If you look at the recent numbers on that, they've really tailed off. And I know 12% is currently part of the budget. If we're going to be conservative, we should look at the most current information and do a trend on that because I think that number unfortunately is going to go down. So that will, that will have an effect on that. The other assumption that's in here is that the open space and parks tax will be continuing through the life of this budget projection. And we know there is a, that does end in 2023. So we'll be doing another vote in November of 2023. So we'll need to be aware if something different happens there, that will have a, a great impact on the budget. on the budget. I think that's all, all my comments for right now, Mayor, but you know, I'm, I'm looking forward to digging in deeper and, and actually sharpening some of the tools that we use. I think there's a couple of areas where I want to talk more about the KPIs and how we measure what's really important in some of those areas. But the one about checking out of books per registered borrower is right on, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And just to make a correction, they don't let you check books out from the reference section. You have to read them at the library. So my number's not as high as it might otherwise be. Next in the queue is Councilmember Brown.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I was still trying to get over your comment about reference books. Just for the record, I, I, I believe that my children check out at least their weight in books every, every month for whatever it's worth. I appreciate the work of the staff. I also appreciate the work that Megan Davis and Kevin Watson have done on this particular budget. I know it's, this is a challenging year and a challenging budget and, you know, I'm, I don't have any specific comments tonight, so I'll keep it very brief, but I just appreciate the staff and look forward to having more discussions, especially with the, with the community about sort of what our priorities are and what, what the appropriate level of service are for particular items.
Any other council comments this evening? Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to add my thanks to staff also for all the effort that they've put in for this past year in, in developing this budget. But also, if you go back with Kevin Watson and Megan Davis and the reason that we made it through the Marshall Fire and did what we could do is based on what they've done for the last 10 years and getting that balance there so that we had enough money that we could continue operating. And so I just want to give an extra thanks to past staff and councils for getting us where we were. And I agree that the coming couple of years is going to be pretty slim and conservative. And I'm really interested in maintaining some kind of rainy day fund, if you want to call it, but also just providing the, the services that we need to provide, like the library and police. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I just want to echo the comments about the staff. Thank you very much to you, City Manager Durbin, and to Kevin, and to Megan, and all the directors and everybody else who's worked on this because it's a mammoth undertaking and we really appreciate it. And now we just have to wrestle it to a conclusion.
All right, well, thank you. So I heard when it comes back, if we can have a graph kind of showing a couple of different options on sales tax projection, you know, that match the trend that we currently see. And then I heard a graph showing various levels of reimbursement on insurance and FEMA. And then I just have one to add to it is just a capital project around using drone technology to enhance imagery of our area or telecommunications, focusing primarily on the southern side of town and on the highest areas of town. And so if we could have a, you know, like a $50,000 capital project for that sort of thing and superior trustees as individuals have indicated interest in perhaps participating with us on a program around that. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, thank you so much, City Manager Durbin, and to Megan Davis and to Kevin Watson, thank you a million. That takes us to our next order of business this evening, which is Resolution Number 39, Series 2022, a resolution declaring the City of Lewisville's decision to opt out of the Colorado Paid Family Leave Insurance Program, F A M L I. And we'll have a staff presentation this evening, I believe, from Rhonda, our HR Director.
Yeah, Robin will actually be doing it, I believe.
Wonderful.
Rob, she's not here, so she must be online. Oh, she's going to make a grand entrance through the door momentarily.
Excellent. She was working so hard.
Up till the very last minute.
Up to the very last minute, that is dedication.
Can we play some music while they're coming in, maybe? Ron, Ron is on vacation this week.
Good evening. No, you're wonderful. Thank you so much for being here. We would love just a brief presentation from you on the program.
Sorry, I'm a rookie. So we save the best for last, the most exciting topic for you all. I'd like to thank you for your time in letting us talk about this family and medical leave insurance program. We have, on behalf of Rhonda, who could not be here tonight, I'd like to introduce Laura Early, who is our subject matter expert on the family leave insurance program and knows this program inside and out and works with IMA, who is our benefits broker, and we rely heavily on her. So with that, I will turn it over to Laura and she will tell you more.
Thank you so much, Robin.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. As, as Robin said, my name is Laura Early. I work as an account executive for IMA of Colorado. We have been the broker for the insurance programs for the City of Lewisville for over 10 years now, and we work very closely together to evaluate these benefit programs on a regular basis. I am a certified employee benefit specialist. I have been in the employee benefits field for about 27 years. I have been very involved with a lot of leading organizations with the benefits field and I'm currently on the National Board of Directors for the International Society of Certified Employee Benefit Specialists. I've also spent 22 years on the employer side managing benefit programs like Robin has. So as she said, I do kind of know this in and out, so I'm happy to share this. And I won't read a lot of the slides because I have a lot of it committed, but wanted to begin in sharing with what this program is all about. So the family leave program is a program that was designed by the State of Colorado to provide paid leave benefits to the citizens of Colorado. This is mandated for private employers and municipalities do have the ability to opt out. They're not obligated to participate. So as a consultant, working with all of my clients, and by the way, my client base is all municipalities, so we'll cover that later on. So it's not just the City of Lewisville, that is a municipality. I actually work in a specialty team with all municipalities. This program requires that private employers offer paid family leave benefits to citizens. And this benefit is fairly complex in terms of its pay calculation. So the benefit would pay 90% of the first 50% of the state average weekly wage and 50% of the next 50%. And if you think that's difficult to figure out, what is the state average weekly wage? And then do all that math calculation. So it is a little bit complex. And the maximum benefit is $1,100 per week as it sits right now. The benefit tax is scheduled to begin in 2023 with employees in the state being able to take advantage of the program starting in 2024. So the intent is for the state to build up its coffers to then start paying benefits in 2024. Participating employees, as I said, will continue to pay premiums for 2023 and the benefits won't begin for another full year. There are three options for the city and we want to go through what those three options are and then the thought process behind our recommendation. So the first option is to participate in this program as a municipality, which means simply to deduct the tax, share that tax with the employees of the city, and be on our way, right? Pay in advance and participate in the program. That's the first option. The second option is to decline participation, but permit the collection and remittance of taxes for those employees who choose to participate. I should pause for a moment and say that even if a municipality opts out of participating in this program, every employee has the ability to opt in on their own. So there is no drawback to an employee. There's no benefit difference whether an employer participates on their own with the, all the employees, or if the employee chooses to participate on their own. If an employee chooses to participate, they have to be in the program for at least three years. They are committing to a three-year participation in that program. So that second option is for the city to decline participation, but allow its employees to deduct the tax and remit it to the state on their behalf. The third option is to decline all of that altogether. Our recommendation would be to decline participation altogether, and we want to run through exactly why we believe that is the right option. So the first option, as I mentioned here, is to participate. The tax that the state has set up is 0.9% of wages up to the, up to the social security wage limit. The provision in the state plan says that employers can charge their employees up to half of what that tax is. They don't have to, but they can. And we, we, Robin and the team has calculated that the value of that tax would be about $78,000 for the employer portion, and then the employees would match that. So what they did is looked at the wages for 2021, the W-2 social security wages, did the math, and so that's about $78,000 each, both on behalf of the employer and on behalf of the employees. If the employer were to participate, they'd have to register on the state program, on the state website. And again, as I mentioned earlier, simply begin deducting taxes and remitting that. So we don't recommend that, but again, we'll get into why in just a bit. The second option, as I mentioned, there does need to be a vote to opt out of the program. That's what we are here for tonight. And the, that second option, as I said, would, would be to allow the employer to withhold and remit the taxes on behalf of employees who do choose to participate. And the third option is to opt out completely, and that's what we'll get into the meat of the presentation and why we're recommending that. So just a couple of pieces of feedback. The Employers Council is a local business organization that helps employers with their HR and benefit needs. They did a survey of, of several employers asking, do you plan to participate? And the red circle you see here is the government group of people that they surveyed, and a majority of people are opting out of this program. Now, we recognize completely that the goal is not to opt out and provide no benefit. We understand that most employers want to provide a competitive benefit because they know they need to attract and retain employees. And so it would not behoove anybody to simply opt out and not offer a benefit because somebody could go down the street and get that benefit through any other normal employer. But the reason we believe the right option is to opt out completely is because we believe that the city has benefits that are fairly significant and will be under evaluation for improvement before we have to actually make that notice to employees. So this is my client data. So these are the clients that I service as part of my job, and all of these have either opted out or will opt into a private plan of their own. So there is an option for the city, which is one that we will explore, which is to offer the identical benefit through the state, that the state has established, but offering that benefit through a private insurance company. We currently, we have Lincoln Financial Group, and Lincoln Financial handles the city's life and disability benefits. Lincoln Financial, along with every other life and disability carrier out there, is quoting for private plans to offer to employers. I actually have another insurance company that has begun quoting. Lincoln Financial has not yet because they're waiting for final state guidance before they make any quotes whatsoever. But I have another carrier that is one of my clients, and they actually quoted a rate that was about 23% cheaper than going through the state. So we don't know yet what their current insurance company will quote. They certainly want to win the business, so they're not going to quote anything more than what the state would offer, but they, this one particular example, I was actually pretty surprised that they were going to quote 0.71% of the state benefit of the social security wage base to administer a benefit that was identical to what the state offers. So that's one reason why we want to look at waiting because we believe that even if we get to a point where we feel like this, the city programs maybe should have this type of benefit in complement to what they already have, then it would be a cheaper option. And the perk to that particular quote was that they won't start charging employees until 2024. So when you look at a savings of about $18,000 to $20,000 off of that particular example, plus if the city were to have that benefit not payable for a full year, that's really about $100,000 total in savings that they wouldn't have to pay the state in advance and simply engage with a private carrier for 2024. So they wouldn't have to start paying that carrier until the benefit actually becomes active. So there's several reasons. So that's my client. And then off to the right, I do have colleagues at the City and County of Denver, and they are also opting out of this program. So what is the cost of this program? As I mentioned, oh, I apologize, I misspoke. It was $76,000, just about $77,000. So the cost of this program that we anticipate for the city would be about $77,000 per year, and that's based on 2021 wages. The State of Colorado has indicated a tax rate of 0.9% for the first two years of this program, being the first year of tax collection in 2023, along with the second year of tax collection 2024. Beyond that, the state has the right to adjust the tax rate for this program up to no more than 1.2%. So that is the maximum allowable under this law is 1.2%. Employers have the right to charge their employees, if they want to, no more than 50% of the cost of this plan. So they don't have to share in the cost, they could absorb it completely, but if they were to share it, it couldn't be any more than 50%. So right now, based on 2021 wage data for the city, that would cost the city about $77,000 and it would cost employees $77,000. So why do we believe that this Colorado Paid Family Leave Program is not in the best interest of the employees right now? There are several leave banks that the city offers that we believe provide significant benefits to the employees that are already at no cost to them. Now, having, before I get into the details of what that is, I want to repeat what I said earlier, and I talk quickly and I recognize that. So any employee who wants to enroll in this program on their own can do so at the exact same rate that they would pay if the employer offered it. But what we're looking at is the potential for already having benefits that are provided by the city and potentially having a carrier, if we were to engage with them, likely be at a cheaper rate. So it's like going into a car dealership and buying a car at the sticker value without negotiating. We have the ability to negotiate, but it's just going to be down the road. So we need to say at this point, we're not interested in your full price offer, we're going to negotiate, but we're going to negotiate after we tell you no thank you. So we're permanently declining that state option. I shouldn't say permanently. We're declining that option as of this point. We can always opt in at a future date. So just know that this declining is not a permanent decline, it is a, we can opt in at a future date. But if we do opt in, we have a three-year commitment on behalf of the city. So having said that, there are a multitude of benefits that are currently offered by the city for its employees. The first is the Paid Leave Bank. The Paid Leave Bank is an accrual of time that is used for vacation, sick, holiday, personal. And if I have that information correctly, I'm going to look up exactly what that equates to in the total number of hours. Excuse me. So it's about 224 hours per year. 80 of those hours are related to holiday pay, but that's about three and a half weeks of time off that can be used for leave purposes that qualify under the Paid Family Leave. There's also an extended illness bank, and this is actually pretty rare. You're actually the only one of my clients that has this type of Paid Family Leave Bank already in place. And this is pay for a qualified family leave event. This is an example of a benefit that we will be evaluating after the first of the year. Right now, this benefit is only available after one year of service. And there are some accruals that go with that. So you accrue four hours per paycheck upon hire to a total of 480 hours. So it does take an employee a period of time. So it does take an employee a period of time to be able to get to that four-hundred-and-eighty hours or twelve weeks of paid leave. But keep in mind that, a couple of things. First of all, this is twelve weeks of paid leave at one hundred percent of pay. The state program pays a fluctuating percentage of pay based on an employee's wage. So a good example, an actual example, I have a list of everybody's salaries. It's de-identified, so I don't know who is who. But I have a list of everybody's salaries, and there are about a hundred and five employees that work for the city that would receive a lesser benefit under the state program than they would under short-term disability if it were for their own medical condition. So there are a significant number of employees who would not get the right benefit. And in fact, the highest paid person on this list, if they were to participate in the family program, would be paying not only the highest percentage of their salary into the program in terms of a tax, they would only get sixteen percent of their wages replaced under this program. So it's not providing the same benefit across the board in terms of a same percentage. But some of these programs that you have here provide a hundred percent of pay to employees already. Again, this is a benefit that we recognize has a gap. It has a hole. We know that it's not available to employees in their first year. However, the paid leave bank does accrue immediately. Then there are other insured benefits, which are short-term disability and long-term disability. Those benefits are also under evaluation in terms of the amount of money that is available to an employee on a short-term and long-term disability basis. Now, these programs, of course, are for their own medical condition and not for any sort of care on a paid family leave. There's also a couple of other gaps, which are the family leave program under the state of Colorado does provide an employee the ability to take leave for grandparents and for siblings, which are not covered under the Family and Medical Leave Act, which is what the extended, the EIB Extended Illness Bank would cover. So we understand that that's a gap as well. We also understand that the part-time employees that are working for the city would be a gap as well. Now, addressing the part-time employees, we have a couple of things that we've considered. First of all, we don't know the full-time work status or any additional part-time work status on behalf of your part-time workers. And they may truly be covered under another employer by this program. A perfect example is me. I actually have a part-time job. To satisfy my own personal passions, I work at Ball Arena. I work part-time as guest relations because I'm a hundred percent concert junkie. I go to a ton of concerts a year. I'm a part-time employee at that arena, and they are supposed to cover me under this benefit. But I actually have a full-time job, and my full-time employer will cover me. So this is a good example. You may have part-time employees who may be covered under this benefit elsewhere. So we will be evaluating, do we offer this benefit to part-time workers? Should we offer this? We would have to pay the tax on behalf of all part-time workers, whether they want it or not, and they would be required to pay the tax. So when you look at the decision to opt out and not charge employees for this benefit, you're actually giving them the freedom to choose what best benefits them and their family and their finances because they can truly opt into this program on their own. Do you have a question?
I was just going to ask, do you want us to hold all of our questions till the end, or are you close to the end?
I'm close to the end.
All right.
Yep, carry on. That's, I, thank you, I appreciate that. So part-time, we said, is a gap, and we know that, but that is also a benefit that we would be evaluating. So there are some timelines with this. The first timeline is December 31st, technically January 1st of 2023, but we all know that's a holiday for most. So December 31st would be the deadline by which the city would have to formally opt out with the state. If no decision is submitted to the state by that date, the state will assume that you will opt in and expects you to collect and remit taxes. The second date is July 1st of 2023. The city would have to notify its employees within a hundred and eighty days of the end of the year of any significant benefit changes so that they can evaluate any employer benefits compared to what the state offers to determine if they want to enroll in the state program. So the employees would, in essence, have about six months in order to make a decision and to opt in on their own at a future date. So the city will be committed to evaluating all the gaps in current coverage, what they currently provide, and any other sort of gaps in order to confirm what those benefits will look like by July 1st of next year so that employees can enroll on their own, should they choose to. Okay. So the resolution, the recommendation that we have, have I forgotten anything that we wanted to cover? Okay. What questions can I take? We do recommend that there is an opt-out, but we would welcome any questions.
First of all, just see if there are any members of the public that care to comment this evening on this topic. Seeing then council comments and discussion, I have a couple of questions. So you talked a lot about, you know, if someone wants to participate, they can. And I guess just, I want to understand more about the reporting requirements and what burden that, like, if I'm a lifeguard part-time, what what does that entail from a signing up standpoint? Like, how often do I have to report? How often do I have to pay? Like, is it really practical to expect that someone's going to sign up on their own?
It is very practical. The state is actually developing an online database system for not only employers to register with the state, but it will be a registration for each individual person if they want to. The registration process is not finalized yet, so I can't speak to what it looks like. Nobody's seen it yet. I suppose that there are people at the state who have seen it. But what they have communicated to us is that there'll be a registration database. There's got to be a link between the state and every employer because if they do have somebody who enrolls, then the state needs to communicate to each employer that somebody has filed for a leave and is approved for a leave. The agreement with the state says, dear employer, you have to agree that if somebody signs up, that you won't pay them any more than one hundred percent of their pay, which means if you have any other program that you offer within your employer and they're getting paid family leave through the state, you have to coordinate those benefits together so that you can't pay more than a hundred percent. So there will be an online database for them to enroll. My assumption is that all of their income, through whatever employers they have, will be reported to a total system through the state. I'm assuming, this is all presumption on my part, right? Because I've got two jobs, so they're going to look at all of my wages from both of my jobs. And then they're going to say, Laura, your premium is X based on your income that's been recorded so far this quarter, and your premium due is X. So that calculation will be based on their income and the state average weekly wage and what that calculation should be.
Sure. And I think my understanding is they'd have to report quarterly on their wages.
That is my understanding.
Okay. So they would have to sign up and then do quarterly reporting. So just following down the same question. So I heard a lot about option one and a lot about option three. If we're interfacing with this anyway with people that sign up, why wouldn't staff have recommended option two? So that people can sign up and have the deductions taken out so that those who want to sign up can sign up, those who don't want to sign up, don't sign up?
Sure. There is a pretty complex calculation as to what that tax should be. It's, I mean, it's point four or five percent of their wages. It's involving setting up the tax deduction out of the system and calculating that and submitting it quarterly. We have thought of several things, including an employee must contribute for at least three years into the program. What is the turnover rate of employees who have been here three years or less? If there's a lot of part-time workers, do you really want to spend the time to set up deductions for people who are going to stay here for three months and move on to another job? If they're a lifeguard for the summer for three months, and they're hopping from employer to employer, let's say, or work for Starbucks and all that. So it's, it's a matter of...
So the concern was just HR burden, is your answer?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's the, that's the primary concern.
So, and I guess, you know, some follow-up data would, like, I've heard from our lifeguards that they work here for many years. So I just would want to understand better what our actual situation is. Like, we have lifeguards that come back over and over. But you brought up kind of my next question, which is around the three-year issue. So they have to sign up for three years. So you start a job, you work for, you know, like you said, three months and then quit. So do they have to continue paying for three years even though they quit their job, or that's a lifetime event? So they don't, then that terminates the three-year deal?
That's a great question that unfortunately I don't have the answer to. I'm not familiar enough intimately with when somebody works and are they only eligible for a paid benefit based on if they are actively employed? Because if you think about it, let's say for somebody who's not working at all, let's say you have a homemaker, and she gets injured, there is no income for her through a workers' comp-type program. So I'm thinking ahead to, if you've got somebody who's not working, what paid leave are they taking if they are not working? So they aren't entitled to get pay from an organization that doesn't, that they're not paying into. So I don't know, and that's the answer, is I don't know how the state is addressing people who have gaps in employment. That's not something I've read yet. If they go from one job to another and happen to encounter a injury or illness or some type of event during their gap in coverage, are they qualified, are they eligible? Here's what I do know. I do know that if somebody were to come to the city as an employee, and they start work, and they've been here for two months, if they have wages that they have earned twenty-five hundred dollars in the prior four quarters, that makes them an eligible employee. Now, if that means the four quarters preceding their employment here, I believe that's what it means, they do have the right to take that paid leave immediately. The provisions in the law say that the job protection only occurs at an employer after six months of service. So if that person comes to work for the city and applies for a leave after a month of service, they get paid by the state if they enrolled in the state program, but they are not job protected. So the city could replace their job during their absence with no repercussions. However, if that person gets to six months of employment with the city and then files for a leave, their job does have to be protected.
Thank you. And then, you know, the last question I have is, like, it may come across in the wrong way, so I'm trying to say it in as sensitive terms as possible. And I'm only asking, you know, out of my fiduciary responsibility to the community and just trying to understand the full frame of things. So you talked about this potential to go to a third-party insurer, and I'm just, I haven't reviewed your contract or anything, how we came across you or anything. So if you could just illuminate for me, like, does, did we, are we incentivizing you to find a third-party? Or is the third-party incentivizing you in some way for us to pick them? Or are you independent from both of those things?
We are not independent. We do receive commissions from those brokers, from those insurance companies, and that's our current arrangement with all of our insurance companies that we have. So there's, I'll back up and say that there's a couple of ways of paying IMA for our services. And that would be, first is a direct flat fee, and that is when the city would pay us a fixed fee each year for our services. The second way is through commissions from each of these programs. So you all are not writing a check to us for our services. You are paying a fee to, for your premiums for all of your insurance brokerage services, and those carriers are paying us. It is our job as fiduciaries, like you, to make sure that we get the best rate on your behalf. We always look at our incumbent carrier for a couple of reasons. First of all, the contract is already in place, and there are costs involved with transitioning to another carrier. There's administrative costs in moving business. But if it's, if it's right to do so, then we go shop for those other services and see if there's anybody who's cheaper. Usually, an incumbent carrier, when you add on an additional service, will give those services to you at a discount because you're already bundling additional services with them. If we were to go out to Unum, or if we were to go to MetLife, or we to go to another carrier independent and say, we would like a quote for brokerage services for Colorado Paid Family Leave Administration, they're going to give us one quote. But if we said, hey, we'll give you all this other business of your life and disability and short-term voluntary life, and we're going to pay you all these other premiums for all these other programs, chances are the premium is going to be lower for that. So it's a, it's a bundling discount, if you will, just like if you go to State Farm, and you bundle three cars and a homeowner's policy and life insurance policies. All of your policies are going to be cheaper because you've bundled several things. But it is our fiduciary duty to make sure that those rates are accurate. But yes, we do get a commission. I could sell that at no commission as well, for sure, but then we're not getting paid for our services.
Sure. So just to, just so I totally understand. So then, right now, we, have we contracted with you to do this work? The city of Lewisville?
This is my job. This is part of my job. So you pay us for services, and this is all in. So we don't charge by the hour, we don't charge by project. So in terms of this research and what I'm standing here for, this is just part of my everyday duties. In terms of going out and buying coverage through this particular carrier or researching this carrier, that's our first step. We want to see what they offer because they are your incumbent carrier. If I saw that the other carriers offering point seven-one percent, and maybe our current carrier comes back with point eight percent, I'm going to look at a couple of different factors. First of all, that's a different company and different demographics for them to provide that quote. They are a multi-state employer who happens to be not, not a municipality. But I do want to look at other carriers if I feel like something else could be cheaper. And I'm sorry if I'm not answering your question correctly.
Thank you. That's great. Any other questions or comments from folks? I'm going to start on the end, and we'll just go down. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Okay. I, I had a very, I think, a very simple question. So today, part-time employees in the city of Lewisville aren't part of our current program.
Correct.
But they could opt in along the lines of what the mayor was talking about to the state program.
Yes, they can.
But that is a gap, is, I'm wondering, is it a gap with the state program?
It would be no different if the part-time employees were to participate on their own or if they were to participate through the employer, should the employer opt in to the official state program.
Right. So if we went with option one, would that include part-time employees?
It would have to include part-time employees.
Has to. So that's actually a gap with the, the, the benefits that we provide.
You are correct. However, the part-time workers actually do have paid sick leave that they currently get up to forty-eight hours. So they do have a small amount of leave that is available to them. But that is one of the gaps that we will be addressing as we evaluate the program.
Right. I mean, that's the next step that's important to me is the sort of reconciliation of what this program is and what we're doing to ensure that our employees have the best benefits that we can afford to provide.
Absolutely. But understand also that, again, there is the difference between an employee, a part-time employee who elects it through the state versus electing it through the employer is you would be required to pay that premium on behalf of all part-time employees, even if nobody ever uses the benefit. So you could potentially be spending money on a lot of workers who aren't going to use it or have minimal utilization versus those who feel like they really, truly want it.
Right. So, so my next question is all about timing. So you, you were talking about January 1st of 2023. If tonight we voted to go with option three, when will we have the rest of that data? Because, but let's say that the analysis shows option one is better than option three. Can we reverse engines? Because, but the notice to the state is January 1st of 2023.
Correct. I would have to look at that. However, my first gut would be to say, if you decided that option one was the best option, I would venture to guess that a private plan through another insurance company is going to be cheaper than directly going with the state.
Oh, yeah. I think you've, you've made that point. I was just, I'm just trying to understand is, because, you know, as you were saying, there are things with our current plan we need to look at, and we need to true up. So what's the impact when we do that? And that's analysis?
Impact is, the first step that we would be waiting for is for the current incumbent insurance carrier to provide us that quote. They've told us October 1st is their date that they would be ready to quote. We have a census with them. They are sitting on it. They're waiting to provide that quote. So as soon as they are ready to go, that's going to be our first step.
Okay.
So that's part of what we're waiting for.
All right. City manager Durbin wanted to make a comment. Never mind. Mayor Protem Maloney.
I'd like you to stand up. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you, mayor.
Just kidding. Oh, no. Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and Mayor Protem have asked most of my questions. I just have one more. On the private insurance company's coverage, what kind of time commitment do they require to belong to it? And can they, at some point during that time commitment, raise their rate?
Great question, and the answer is yes, they could. So when a private insurance company elects to provide that coverage to you, they are providing you a quote based on what your census looks like, the demographics of your employer. So they might look at, what percentage of females do you have? What percentage of females do you have that are of childbearing age? Most insurance companies will tell you that on a disability basis, the most common is pregnancy. So they're going to look at, what type of occupations do your employees have? How old are they? Part-time, full-time wages? They have all of those actuaries behind the scenes to determine what those rates should be. If the experience rating of the city... If the experience rating of the city is more than what they anticipate, if they run at a loss where they pay out more in benefits than they take in at premiums, they could potentially raise their rates. Now, the opposite could occur as well to say, wow, you guys have run great three years in a row, and you haven't had a lot of claims, and you're running at, and I'm going to make up a number, you're running at 70% loss ratio. So, let's say they took in $100,000 but only paid out $70,000 in claims. They're sitting on extra $30,000. They may come back and say, "We're going to reduce your rates by 5%." Could the rates go up? Yes. Could the rates go down? Yes. It just depends.
But, but if the rate is changing, we have the option at that point to drop out. We don't have a time commitment that we have to be with them.
That is correct. It would usually be a year. Those contracts typically would be one year at minimum. If we felt like we got a good rate and could lock in for a multi-year agreement, we would usually recommend that, especially if it's less than what the state is offering. So, that would just be a negotiation at the time that the contract is signed. But usually, those types of contracts are about a year, not about. They are at least one year. They are in yearly increments. Sometimes, certain contracts can be agreed upon for longer. Medical contracts usually are not because those are the most volatile. But things like disability payments or EAP contracts or other things like that can have multi-year agreements, dental, vision, things like that. This remains to be seen because it is new, but yes, they could raise rates.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was just going to go down the line, but if you have something on this point, I'll jump. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, mayor. I appreciate it. Ms. Early, I appreciate your, your presentation. I have a question for our staff. How many part-time employees do we have? Bodies, not FTEs.
Right. We approximately have 200.
200 people? Okay. And you said it was about 100 full-time employees? Is that right?
About 200 full-time employees.
About 200 full-time employees?
Yep.
Okay. So, the examples that Ms. Early used, about 100 people seeing a reduction in their benefits if we go with the state program, is only half of our full-time staff. Is that correct?
So, the quote that I gave you was 100 and, now, the, I want to share, first of all, that number that I gave you, 105 employees, that is if the reason they take family leave is for their own personal medical condition because the short-term disability plan is what I compared it against. So, short-term disability pays out at 67%. And so, I looked at anybody who made, whose salary would get them less than 67% should it be a short-term disability in nature. Certainly, they would have a benefit under the family leave that would pay them more. So, that is 105 people who, if it was for a short-term disability need, would actually get a lesser benefit under the family plan than they would get under short-term disability.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What is the average number of hours that each of our part-time employees works?
We'd have to get that information for you. It varies pretty considerably, but no more than 29 hours. But it's going to be significantly less.
Okay. So, doing the math, it seems like you're getting, so you get one hour as a part-time employee for every 30 hours that you work, right? So, you're talking about, if, if a person even works 20 hours a week, I'm just going to pull a number because you don't have that information? It would seem that, you know, a person would have to work at least a week and a half before they get an hour. It would be many, many, many weeks before they would achieve that 48-hour balance. And then, they would only have, be eligible for about two and a half weeks of pay. Does that, does that math seem to work out for you as well? Something, something like that?
Yes. As the program currently is, we're in compliance with the HFWA Healthy Families in Workplaces Act. So, that is the one hour for every 30 worked. That is, so we're in compliance with that. Our goal is to enhance these benefits.
But we don't know, but tonight, we don't know what those enhancements would look like. I think it goes without saying that, first of all, I just want to call out Ms. Early's comments about how private insurance is rated. In my field of healthcare, you're not allowed to rate insurance based on someone's gender, based on whether they are sick or healthy. You're only allowed to rate on certain things, including tobacco use. Disappointing that we seem to be propping up a system, to me, that perpetuates the kind of, quite frankly, sexist and gendered language that would charge a workforce that has more people who can become pregnant than, they would charge them more than perhaps a workforce that was predominantly people who could not become pregnant. Ms. Early, is it, is it safe to say, in your professional opinion as a broker, that the state's program is fairly disruptive to our current market, employer market?
I believe that the state has the best of intentions to ensure that all citizens have some ability to take a paid leave for their employees. Personally, I support that. I do love the fact that the state is making sure that employees are taken care of and have the ability to take time off. But what I also love is employers who take that benefit and try to enhance it or provide good as, as good of or better than. So, I'm in support of this. Is it disruptive? Yes. Is it cumbersome and try, is it going to be bumpy to implement? Yes. I have administered and paid benefits under all the other states that have leave programs, New Jersey, New York, California, Rhode Island. There are six or seven different states who have paid leave benefits. And I've personally administered pay under those programs for employers that I've worked for. Have the implementation of those programs been easy? No. But once we get to a few years down the road when this is settled and it's, and the systems are implemented and it's normal, then it's going to be fine, and people will expect this type of benefit. But at this point, I believe that there are going to be options that the city has for providing other benefits that won't break the bank, that will be a better use of taxpayer dollars, and will allow employees to have choice on their own.
I think I'm, I'm uncomfortable with this in large part because I'm, I'm disappointed that I think that the disruptive program that the state is, is administering is, for one thing, incredibly important for our workforce. It doesn't take much internet research to figure out that only 26% of state and local government workers have access to paid family leave, and only 23% of all workers, and this is according to the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics. I think it's, it's particularly troubling when you think about that only 12% of low-income earners across the country have access to paid family leave. And the people who do have, tend to have access to paid family leave are going to be people who are professionals in management positions. They're also going to be predominantly, so they're going to be predominantly high-income earners. Folks who work in part-time positions, like the part-time positions that we were discussing this evening, tend to be predominantly female, and they tend to be predominantly people of color. And by leaving part-time people out, we are disproportionately impacting people who may be able to bear children and who also are, are people of color. I see this as a, not only a gender issue, a gender equity issue, but also as a racial equity issue. I think it's also worth noting that the, that federal employees are now eligible to receive 12 weeks of paid parental leave. The federal government has made this, this commitment as well. I think that it's hard for me to support an option without a real understand, an opt-out, I should say, without a real understanding of what great things may come from our staff. I appreciate our intention to provide a benefit that may be equitable or equal to the staff approach, but I do not see any of that in front of me this evening. I, I cannot support an opt-out not knowing what's on the other side at this point. I think a couple more, a couple more comments I wanted to make is just that it's, it's, I think the, I don't doubt that a person who is high-income can cobble together leave that they might need for various needs, such as, you know, the arrival of a child or their own personal health care. I don't believe our benefits currently do what the state does. And I also believe that the sort of requirements about the way that, you know, the length of time that a person needs to serve in order to achieve certain benefits through our system are not, are not equitable compared to what the state is offering. So, until I see, you know, a program that is put together that is equal to or in excess of, in terms of benefits to what the state is offering, I can't support what's, an opt-out.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks. Yeah. I, I agree that we should have a policy with our city that is second to none and certainly not worse than the state plan, and making sure that we are taking care of everyone in our, in our care. I know my, my company is excited to have a statewide program that will help cover some of the costs that we already do for our employees. And I, I hope that, you know, it is our intention to be incredibly competitive. We can't not be competitive in giving people exactly what they need. And I think, you know, part-time employees are difficult, and we deal with that again in my profession and you guys in yours, that, you know, that runs a whole gamut. People that work 28 and a half hours every single week for 15 years, and people that work five hours and then quit. And those are very different people. And so, this is way over my head in the complexity of exactly how to do this. But I agree with Kyle in the sense that it's important to me in, that we have a family leave policy and a, and a leave of absence policy that takes care of our humans, and that it is at least as good as what the state is mandating, if not better. And so, I trust you guys to do exactly that. And I would, I'm just shocked that the private market would be able to offer something less expensive over the long term than the nonprofit market. They, they're in it for profits. So, it's, it, it blows my mind that they're able to, able to beat the price. But again, if they are, that's worth looking into. But I, you know, I'm in full support of our effort to provide really great leave for our employees.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah, this is one where I have to, I mean, I just inevitably have a hat close to me that's my 30-year employment attorney hat on the employer's side. And so, I appreciate the analysis that you've provided. It's not easy. You know, I, I know the, I know the, ensure that you're referring to Lincoln pretty well. I think, actually, I've got one of their policies myself. But I think, I guess I have a number of responses. I think with respect to what's going on nationally and so forth, I, I understand the concerns that Councilmember Brown has raised. But I, I don't know that there are the, the issues that we're facing on the ground here with our workforce. I think the, one of the things that all of us have mentioned tonight is that perhaps we don't know what our workforce looks like. And I don't mean that in terms of visually. I mean that in terms of how they stack up. You talked about one example on the higher end of somebody who would not do well under, you know, if we had this program that the state is offering. I don't know how it looks for people on the lower end or the part-timers.
Really quickly, the maximum wage that somebody can get replacement under this program is 90%.
Yeah.
So, the lowest wage earner would get up to 90% of their wages replaced.
Yeah. And, and I don't, you know, the fact that the state mandates it doesn't make it good. The fact is that, that this is a new program. It's complicated. It took an awful lot of work by a number of different agencies, a lot of work on the, a part of the legislators that passed it. And it's version 1.0. And so, all of the, the, some of the problems that you're, and opportunities, I suppose, to be better than the state program, don't surprise me a bit. This is what happens, in my experience, every time the state does have a program that is, is put out to assist employees. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. I think the fact that other municipalities are opting out is interesting to me. It's not what we have to do. I, I think probably, you know, it's nice that we have a little bit of time to make this choice. I don't think there's a snowball's chance tonight that we're going to make a decision. That's my sense of it, that I could be wrong. I appreciate the analysis you're providing, and I'm inclined, if I had to vote yes or no, I'd vote yes, that I think that the option, I appreciate the staff's work and your work. And I, I, I think the, the devil is always in the details. And the direction that we're talking about is providing benefits that are at least as good as what the state is mandating. And I think that's a really good thing. And if we do it, I mean, unfortunately, fortunately or not, we have, we have our own pretty complicated set of policies that we're already dealing with. And, you know, I, I think you guys have done an admirable job at trying to explain those and, and the gaps. So, and I'm, I'm glad that there are options to try to involve private insurers in that. I think we, you know, and I trust our folks to keep the reins on you so that you're not just giving us what makes your folks the most money, but makes the most sense for us. And I, I'm, I'm not worried about that piece of it. So, I think, you know, from my standpoint, we might want to know a little bit more about how this is ultimately going to affect our workforce. But I, I don't see the dangers that Councilmember Brown had mentioned being necessarily ones that are, that would indicate the sky is falling here if we opt-out.
I'm, I guess, I feel like this is an area where I do not have a lot of expertise. And I, my concern is that we are doing, making the best choice for our staff, both full-time and part-time, as well as making a responsible financial decision for the community. But, you know, I just, I guess for me, honestly, it's just a ton of information I'm trying to take in. And, you know, it's hard for me to feel like I, um, boy, I understand this at a level of depth that I need to understand it to actually be able to compare apples to apples. Because I think, you know, this is part of the problem, and it's always the problem with insurance. and it's always the problem with insurance. It just feels like we're looking at apples and oranges. And so on some level, I feel like I'm gonna defer to staff's expertise and, you know, the expertise we're being presented with tonight. Because I, I don't, you know, and I really respect Councilmember Brown's position. And I'm, you know, interested in really understanding that better.
I would like to offer some feedback, if you don't mind, on Councilmember.
If you please not interrupt and let her finish making comments. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just, I guess that, you know, at this point for me, it's just, you know, I make a living providing analysis of information. And I just feel like I'm sort of in over my depth with this without really knowing, you know, what's going to be best. And so that's kind of where I am.
Thank you, go ahead.
To address Councilmember Brown's concerns about discriminatory offers of coverage or pricing of insurance, I believe that the, what you're referring to, and we can certainly confirm this, but nobody has the right to be declined coverage based on their gender, based on their race, based on their risk level. They cannot be declined coverage. So that may be the difference between the two. But people can be individually rated for insurance. They can be individually rated based on what they, what an insurance company believes is the risk associated with that. A good example would be an 18-year-old driver, male driver, compared to a 50-year-old female driver who might take less risk. But they can't be denied the offer of coverage. They can't be denied the offer of being provided medical coverage based on their genetic history. That's the GINA Act, things like that. But they, all of these, all of your employees have this program available to them if they want it. What we're looking at is the cost to, to the city to provide a benefit a year in advance and to spend $78,000 to do so when we believe that we could get that cheaper and when we believe that we could potentially offer benefits internally that are already comparable.
Thank you. And I just, what I heard Councilmember Brown say is not trying to dispute with you what the law is or what people can or can't do, just that that practice is in itself not necessarily something that we would want to continue promoting as a society. So I think it was more of an aspirational, like, higher level of thinking. So I don't know that there's a dispute of what's factual at this point. So I'm just, I'm listening to everybody. I did hear a couple of requests for data that seemed like that could help facilitate the conversation to a, you know, consensus point. So I heard that it'd be useful to have some data around our part-time employees and what their current benefits are. And, you know, the types of things, like how many hours they're currently working, maybe in a way, you know, Robin, what you think is appropriate to divide it. Maybe it's by area, maybe it's by year. You know, you'll look at the data and tell us what the right different categories are. But some more information on our part-time employees and how these three different options would affect them. So like option 1, 2, and 3. And then it sounded like there was a lot of interest in trying to understand better, Robin, what you're hoping to bring when you bid this. So like what some of the changes to the benefits plan that you're thinking about are. And maybe there's a way to tie some of those as commitments from the council into the resolution so that we all feel better knowing that we're committing to providing these new things, so understanding what those proposals are. And then this, I didn't hear anyone else ask for this, but I can selfishly include my own data requests. If I could understand better what the HR burden is of option 2? So is this like an hour a quarter? Is this two weeks a quarter? Is this, we need three more people if you put this on us? And in part, I'm trying to compare it to, it sounded like we'll have to interface with the state at some level anyway if someone opts in from our organization. And so I'm trying to understand, so like there will be some kind of increased interaction with the state regardless of what we do. So would option 2 really be that much more of a delta above and beyond that or not? And then I also want to understand, if we don't do option 2, if we did option 3, how much time for each individual employee that really is? Because like, I know people always say, well, anyone can start a 401K. Like anyone, you don't have to have an employer plan. But the rate of employees who actually make a retirement account that don't have a retirement plan at work is very low, even though it's not that much work. Like, yeah, anyone can do it. But no one, practically no one does it if they don't have an employer plan. So I just want to understand if we're saying, well, yeah, anybody can sign up. Is that really true? Or is there a huge, is there quite a lot of reporting? Because I don't have a good enough understanding how much work they have to do. Were there other data needs that people had? And then, Robin, from your perspective, I know there are timelines. You laid out a lot of things here for us. Is there, do we need to call a special meeting to take this up again? If we take it up at our next meeting, is that soon enough for you?
Yes, I think so. I mean, honestly, we just have to report into the state by the end of the year. So that is our deadline at this point. So we need to have either a vote or a no-vote or decision made by that point in time. So we can certainly go to the next meeting or where time allows.
So, and so my recommendation to council would be to get those questions asked and bring it back for another discussion. But of course, we can take whatever path the whole group wants. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, yes. I have one other question on the opt-out. And you said that with the, with the private insurance companies, they would base their rates on the ratings of our employees. Do they change that rating based on how many of those women who could get pregnant opt into the state program instead? Does our price go down or?
No, if we went through a private insurer, then all employees would be covered. It would be identical to the state program. So all part-time employees, all everybody. So you wouldn't have somebody who then goes to the state directly because they are covered through the private plan. That would be exactly the same benefit.
No, I mean.
It wouldn't reduce the rate if you had a bunch of pregnant women who went to the state directly because they would be covered under our program.
So they'd be covered under both?
No, they would, the state would not cover them because they would be covered by the employer plan. The state has to approve your employer's private plan.
Councilmember Fahey, can I give you a different example? At Dr. Cog, we had several employees in a row get really serious cancers. And so the insurance rates went up because we had so many sick employees with long-term outlooks. And so like, when your employees undergo life events with private insurance, the rate can change.
So yes, if there were a lot of people under this private insurance option who utilize the program and the utilization of the plan was higher than the insurance company expected, the rates could go up for the company, for the city as a whole.
No, I'm asking if the exact opposite happened.
If we went with option 1?
If we went with the, with, with opting out of the state's program so that, and then we would go with the private who would give us this rate. And their rate would be based on how many single females or?
Their rate would be based on the entire demographic of the city.
Right. Even if those women opted into the state and weren't taking advantage of the city's program, would the rate?
That's not a possibility. That's not a possibility because they wouldn't have both. You wouldn't have double coverage under the family leave because they'd be paying two taxes.
But I'm saying, so they wouldn't be paying the cities? They would only be part of the states? I don't know. Okay, never mind.
No, it's okay. The good, the good thing is we're asking for more information so we can each, like, we have time to get our questions answered between now and the next meeting. So it sounds like it would be good, you know, I'm sure Robin or Rhonda would be more than happy to meet with any of us between now and the next meeting and get all our questions answered.
And I will push the insurance carrier to see how quickly they can quote. And so we'll have that to you as soon as possible. It may not be before the next meeting, but that will come as soon as we can.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in the recommendation in the staff report, the second sentence, I guess, really talks about there will be additional information, you know, feedbacks, reports. Could you expound upon what you're intending that additional information to be? Because we have questions, obviously. What else were you thinking you'd be bringing back to us?
It would be that quote from the insurance company to compare apples to apples, to say, here's what the state program is. And when a private insurance company offers their program, it has to match the state program exactly. So we'll be able to tell you what the cost would be to participate in the state program versus what the cost would be through a private insurer with the exact same option.
All right, so you're lining up the same demographics of?
Correct.
Part-time, full-time and all that.
And then we could analyze just the part-time employees. So, Mayor, you had asked about the part-time workers. We could take all of those part-time employees, calculate their wages for 2021, and do the calculation of what their premium would be under that program to bring you just the cost for the part-time workforce.
Awesome, thank you. It looks like Robin was thinking about saying something. I just saw your hand toward your microphone. Sorry.
Not sure what it was, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I just didn't want to catch you.
I think I was still thinking about Deb's question. I really wanted to answer, but I want to make sure I understand it. So let me think on that.
City Manager Durbin?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I don't know that we should commit to the next meeting to bring this back. We need to bring this back right. So if that's okay with you, I'd rather not commit to the next meeting, but that we need to bring it back soon with a lot more information. And I also want to just confirm that my intention and our intention is that we are exactly like you said, a competitive employer. We offer competitive benefits, equivalent or preferably better than what the state's minimum requirements are. So I just want to make sure you hear that from me, that that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you for summarizing that. I think you did a great job. And the nice thing is I think there was a lot of agreement about trying to provide really great benefits for the employees and just needing a little more information. So thanks, City Manager Durbin. Councilmember Lay, final word goes to you.
The other thing that would be useful to note is, and this may be more qualitative than anything else, is of all of the kinds of compensation and benefits we offer, how important this one is to part-timers particularly and others in the workforce? Because it's not the only way we compensate people. And I don't want to give it, I want to give it its due. But I don't want to, you know, I think we need to keep it in perspective as we're making the decisions about how, how to allocate funds. Thanks.
Thank you all, great conversation tonight. Thank you so much for being here at this late time. And that takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. It was wonderful to see you. That takes us to our council comments committee reports and identification of future agenda items. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. It has come to my attention, from the Mayor Protem, actually, that I haven't given a report on the airport roundtable, the noise roundtable recently. And while, you know, I'm sure, I know Emily's not here and she's our guru. And I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Most and her, her help and as our alternate on that. And Councilmember Most's participation in many important discussions through the roundtable. I did want to give a quick update, but I do believe that there's been, that we are making some progress for the first time in maybe two years on thinking about preferred routes in and out of the airport. Specifically, the airport's piloting a program right now that would, that would encourage air traffic specifically from the flight schools to go over, you know, major roadways and help to minimize the traffic over Louisville. We will see how that, how that pans out. But I do want to say, and we've challenged, I also want to say that we've challenged the airport to come up with preferred routes to the south as well so that that traffic maybe never even comes to our area. But I think it's important to notice that we are making some progress for the first time and that, and that, you know, Westminster has rejoined. There was some, some conversation about Westminster withdrawing. They have decided to rejoin the roundtable. So I think we're making some, some positive progress.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, yes. I wanted to make a short update on Commuting Solutions. I was just at their most recent meeting. They were talking about Highway 119, the Boulder diagonal. They're anticipating that their design work will be finished by the end of 2023 and they will begin construction beginning 2024. Their bike path is going to allow EV bikes of 1, 2, and 3 levels. And they're doing an alternative signal system that adjusts lights according to the traffic rather than the time. And so if it's, it doesn't matter what time of day it is. If there's a lot of traffic, the lights will change according to the traffic. And then they're also hoping that everyone will vote for the transportation tax in November.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Lay?
Wanted to just give a quick update. After our LRC council meeting last week, I wanted to pass back that the LRC really appreciated the time and the comments that went back and forth. And I think already, even since, maybe Caleb was going to cover this in his little report, but at EVC, there was, he mentioned that there'll be some EVC people who kind of keep an eye on maybe going to some of the LRC meetings. And we're going to do that as well from LRC. And it's all going to be with the goal of, I think, coordinating and working together in the future much more than the past. I think the, just great trend line there. But they, they really appreciate the time. And I certainly appreciate the seriousness with which you all, you know, wasn't surprised perhaps, but prepared for that meeting and had really, really useful things to say. And I thought it was a great meeting. So I wanted to pass that back to you.
Thank you. At Northwest Mayor's and Commissioners Coalition, we sent a letter to RTD thanking them for the Zero Fair for Better Air campaign. We just reflected on the positive aspects of it primarily. They really did a lot in preparation by way of cleaning up Union Station and making sure that the local governments had a media toolkit so that we could all communicate the same types of things. So it helped our staff on the communication side put out information about it. And then we just shared some things that, you know, different communities saw just sort of like as anecdotes, not data. But they'll, they'll provide the data back to us. But we saw more people in general riding the bus than had been in a few months, it seemed like. And we saw, we heard stories of like kids that took the bus to the Boulder County Fair because they were like, hey, the bus is free, let's go to the fair. So there were a ton of kids that just showed up at the fair on the bus one day, which was kind of cool, just because it was free. And that's just a wonderful story. And just, it seemed like the drivers really were fond of it as well. And just kind of the last interesting tidbit about that that I noticed is in Boulder, a lot more people started using the airport bus as a local route, which added to the flexibility because you would never take the airport bus because it would cost quite a lot more and, you know, more than three times as much more. So you would just wait for the right bus. But because it was all free, it was like, well, there's an airport bus here. I'll hop on it and get off in a few blocks.